I'd like the Planning Commission meeting for July 9th come to order. Would everybody please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us? Okay, well, we're waiting for Michelle to get her recorder going, so it'll be a minute or two here.
Doug, I'm ready.
Okay, Michelle, could we have roll call, please?
Kimberly Locke, here. Paulo Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton is absent. Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Jason Wusley is absent. Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is public comments. These are items for either general public comments or for public comments on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please give the agenda item number to the request to speak for. So, is there any public comments out there? Anybody like to make a public comment? With that, I'll close public comments. Next, we need the approval for minutes for May 29, 2013 workshop.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weiskie, so moved.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five yays. And then we need approval for the June 6 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Weiskie, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Locke, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The City Council liaison report. Do we have anybody from City Council?
I don't have any direct liaison reports. I'll cover the council meeting during announcements later in the meeting.
First item on the agenda is unfinished business. It's Summerscape Landscaping. Would the applicant's representative?
Commissioners, good evening. John Krempotic with KLS Planning. I'm representing Summerscape Landscape Company as the applicant. A couple of things. I just wanted to quickly summarize. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, certainly save it for questions with the commission, but...
John, can you hold on just one second?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, John, I did ask for public...
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think the request is just to open the public hearing. Public comment versus public hearing.
Okay.
So if you would, thanks.
This is going to be a public hearing? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I just wanted to again touch quickly. Remember last time we were here, Mr. Altman, who was representing, he's the builder for the subdivision to the north and east at the end of Whistler Court there. I think that's called Copper Leaf subdivision. He wanted to host a meeting with his buyers in that subdivision. They had their meeting on the 20th. I guess apparently seven people showed up. He expressed his concerns to Vern and I. We agreed to some revised conditions, so I think we're in pretty good shape with respect to that subdivision. Of course, there could be people here, but I don't know that. All I know is what we agreed to with Mr. Altman. The other thing I wanted to point out to you, because I did contact on June 3rd, we made application to the Union Pacific Railroad for that access easement going out to the west across the railroad tracks. We haven't heard back. I sent him an email today. Still no word from the railroad, so it's been like closer to 40 days, but it's the railroad, so it's something out of our control. The other thing is a couple of conditions I'd like to discuss with the commission. I do have a lot of detail in my analysis of the variances, because we had several variances. Basically, condition number 10 is revised. The way I read it satisfies Mr. Altman's concerns as the builder and then also staff. The one thing that's concerning in there, and I'd ask that if you could strike the language of number 10 to read about referencing the enclosing of the equipment and the building materials. We have, as you know, we had our own neighborhood meeting. We noticed 133 of the households to the east and to the north and to the south. We had about 12 people show up. Not one person, with the exception of the person at the southeast corner, asked for screening. Mr. Zamarepa, the owner, agreed to a condition to build a fence because they sit up about 10 feet above the site. That was the only request from any of the people that we know about for screening. So, to try and enclose a landscaped yard and building materials or landscape materials would be very, very difficult cost-wise and to manage in his operation. The other I would ask, and this is a simple striking of language, would be on condition number nine, to just go to code-sized trees. And here would be the similar rationale, is that we're doing 100% more than the code requires in screening around the site of the evergreen trees. So if we went to 10-foot tall and 6-foot tall in the mix from the code, you'd still have 100% more density, and of course, over time, we'd have very intense screening, in my opinion. So, that would be my request for condition amendments. And again, I'll just wait to hear from the commission about any questions you have on the use permit and particularly the variance, if you'd like. Thank you.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. As you know, this project was postponed, continued from the June 6 meeting to allow the applicant and Mr. Altman to go through some issues that they had with the project at the last meeting. Condition number 8 and number 10 have been modified to reflect some of those concerns. Condition number 8 was modified to also provide prohibited entering and leaving time in the morning between 8:30 and 9:15 a.m., as well as the PM time, which is about 3:45 to 4:15. And these hours were based on discussions with school district staff, based on what school these children would go to and when the school gets out and about what time they would get there. So we tried to provide an overlap time for that. And of course, the condition says they have to adjust that should those time periods change. On condition number 10, we just wanted to clarify that all the outdoor storage areas basically had to be placed where they are as shown on that site plan, and that the bins, which are on the south, on this area right in this here, and then also the landscaping materials would not have to be screened, and the landscape materials would not count towards their 20% site area for outdoor storage, which would basically get them out of a variance if it's considered that way by the Planning Commission. Also, there was concern about notifying people that there would be trucks coming onto Coggins Drive, and that was already in condition number 12, that they had to put up signs on either side of the entrance to notify people that trucks would be entering and leaving the Also, he was concerned about how these conditions would be enforced, and basically, it's like with any project, if someone has a complaint about a condition, they can call Reno Direct, and that would be directed to the code enforcement or other appropriate city department, and that would be investigated and resolved. Also, we did receive a petition in support of the project, which is attached to your staff report. Also, I forwarded two emails that I received after the report was published, and one of them was from Fred Altman in favor, and he had seen all the conditions as modified. And we also, this afternoon, received one email in opposition, which I did forward to you, and also you have a hard copy up there. Staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions as modified, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern.
Now we'll open public comments on this item. I have some people who don't want to speak, but Victoria Wallington, she's in favor. I have Sean Conway, who says, "I do not make a statement," but I assume he's in favor. Sean here, he didn't really...
No, I have to speak.
Yeah, it is Sharon, I'm sorry.
I have to speak.
You're in favor?
Yeah, I have to speak. She wants to speak.
Oh, please come up to the mic. You have three minutes. And after Sharon is Ed Hawkins.
We had a petition that went around...
Sharon, can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Sharon Conway, and I live in the Copper Leaf Residence area. And what we're protesting is the one-way access for the trucks to come in one way and go out the same way. And we were hoping that maybe they would exit out on the west side where Fantasia is, and they were trying to get something with the railroad to open that access up, which we don't know if we're going to ever see that open. But the way they come in is the same way they're going to come out, and there's only one way of a vehicle to get in, and they have to wait for another vehicle to come out, because it's not wide enough. We were also asking, we don't really oppose against it, the landscaping company, but we're just issuing about the alleyway of them going one way. And also, we were thinking also, if they could put a stop sign over on Coggins and Copper Leaf, because once people come out of Coggins, it's also really hard to pull out when people come around that bend, and let alone a big truck to come around five miles to get around that bend. A car's going to come around and hit. That was our other issue. And other than that, I think that was it.
Okay, thanks, Sharon.
And thank you.
Ed Hawkins? And then after Ed, Chris Hawks?
For the record, Ed Hawkins, Chair of the North Valleys Ward Foreign Ab. When we met on the third week in May to discuss this project, there was no opposition from any of the neighbors from Copper Leaf or Coggins or anywhere in that neighborhood. Day after our meeting, they held a neighborhood meeting with the builder, the owner, and his staff, and there was one guy, as was told, on the southeast corner that wanted some fencing so he wouldn't be able to see what's going on in the yard down there. I would like you to approve this project with the conditions that are set forth and modified, and if we had a problem with the neighbors, one of the first places they should come is to our nab meetings and speak out. I'll cover for any one of the neighbors that would show up and decide there's a problem with this, but we've received no complaints. Nobody shows up to make those complaints at the nabs, and that's where we start out at, and this is where we're at now. We've continued it from June till now. I think it needs to be approved so they continue on with what they're going to do there. They're only going to make it better, and there is a concern about that driveway, but I think we can rectify part of that. They do have an emergency egress on the other end, the south end of that property, if it's needed, but they do have one access in and out, and I think it's going to be impossible for them to get permission from UP to cross those railroad tracks. And with that, I really think it's going to be a project worthwhile for the neighborhood, and it's only going to make the place look better on that acreage. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Hawkins? Or Chris Hawks, I'm sorry.
I state my name?
Yes.
Chris Hawks. I live on Whistler Court. My house is not in that map, though I'm kind of farther over. I lived there. My first house was on the far end corner when United Rentals had their business there. I worked a swing shift, slept during the day, and the issues that I had with it was all you heard was backup alarms, trucks idling on that Coggins Road. It was just, the noise was unbearable. I'm not opposing the landscape company, because I do think it's good for the community around there and definitely making it look better, but that road is definitely a problem. My backyard, you know, meets right up against it. And also, the same thing with Sharon, says that corner that they're talking about is a blind corner. I drive a half-ton pickup truck, and I've almost been T-boned 12, 15 times, and not on my, you know, not my fault. People come flying around a blind corner. You got a truck out there, you got kids playing in the streets, you got, you know, all sorts of stuff. The other issue is, I know the railroad is hard to work with. It's not impossible. I mean, it's not like we're going to the moon. That other driveway, I mean, if it's there and the railroad's willing to work, you know, over time, I would say, open that second road to get an in and out, because that road is not wide enough for two vehicles, let alone a tractor, trailer, truck, or semi. And then, like I said, it's not that I'm opposing, but, you know, he's got to follow the guidelines that are in this paperwork, or I guess we'd be back here, but that's all I got to say.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Bring it back to the commissioners for questions. Commissioner Weiskie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the applicant's representative, Mr. Krempotic?
Hi, John. Hi, Kevin.
For clarification for me, would you, we received in our staff report amendments to condition 8 and to condition 10, and you are proposing another change to what I thought was agreed to and submitted to Vern from both your perspective and the neighbors. Now, this evening, you're not in agreement with what you agreed to before, so exactly what lines are you wanting to change in this condition, number 10?
Yeah, I appreciate that. It wasn't so much about, there's certainly no backpedaling here. Ricardo, and I spoke in the lobby, this reflects what we agreed to with Mr. Altman. He had no concern about enclosing equipment in a building.
Okay.
And Ricardo told me it's a deal breaker for him to have to go. You look at that big area of equipment storage. If it's done nicely, it's on a concrete pad. We're asking for the storage of the equipment to be outside.
So exactly what lines in this condition are you looking at changing, and what changes are you proposing to?
It would be the striking, one, two, three, let's see, in condition number 10, okay? Fourth line would be stricken, and the "and" in the third line, the last, so it reads, "allowed by code," start there and strike, "and" and "enclose the equipment and building material storage areas within a building."
Okay, so you're proposing to strike the words "and," and then in line four, the entire line four, with the first word of line five being "building"? Am I...
I'm looking at a different one. Let me go through it, and do you see where it says 5.7 acre site is allowed by code?
Yes.
And then strike the rest of that sentence? No, excuse me, up to "building."
Up to "building"? So it's okay to, so you don't want to enclose the equipment, but the building material storage areas within a building, those would be enclosed?
No, it's excluding the materials. That's what the next line says. Right?
The next line says excluding the materials. To me, it made sense the way it was written before, and now, I'm guessing at what you are proposing this evening, and I need you to explain it to me and probably the other commissioners. Maybe I'm the only one.
Okay. So the idea here is, and I think the code is treating this sort of like a junkyard. That's the only thing we can figure, when we don't have anybody from the neighborhood, including Mr....
Let's not, just explain to me the wording, the verbiage that you want, and then we'll go into why, if I don't understand that part.
Okay. So, are you tracking with me on 5.7 acre site is allowed by code?
Yes.
Then you would strike "and" and "enclose the equipment and building material storage areas within a building."
Okay.
Okay, and then leave the rest.
And then leave the rest?
Yes.
And then you mentioned also going back to condition number 9, and I believe you were talking about line number 3, but I would like you to clarify what line you were talking about striking verbiage and/or reintroducing a different height of trees?
It was just on the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth line, where it says, "east and south shall be 10-foot tall evergreen trees."
What are you wanting that to be?
To be code, which is 70% 10 feet, 30% 6-foot tall. Again, the rationale being, I think that's the important part, there's really two pieces to that. One is, nobody asked for it. We went and visited several yards. The other is, we're doing 100% more density than the code requires.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do, John?
Yeah.
Is get verbiage, not explanation. Okay? So, "shall be 10-foot tall evergreen trees" to 70%? How is it documented in code?
The way...
Do you have it written down? Would you like to submit that, or...
If you'd like me to, that'd be fine. I thought we could simply just refer to the code like Vern did in the last sentence.
If I can jump in here a little bit quick.
Sure.
Vern, correct me if I'm wrong, if you are choosing to do that, you could just remove the whole condition, I believe. If we're just referring back to code, then we would just strike the whole condition?
If you were so inclined to let them do code on the east side adjacent to the residential, what I would suggest is you take out 1, 2, 3, 4. The fifth sentence that says, "east and south shall be," and take out 10-foot tall, and then you go down to the sentence that starts with "all evergreen trees."
Yes.
"All evergreen trees required to be installed shall meet code standards 70% 10 and 30% 6." I know it's referring to code, but there are some places where they can have a mix of trees, and other places, we're suggesting they be evergreen trees. So any place where evergreen trees are required, they have to do that, meet the code standard, if that's the way you guys want to go with this.
Okay.
And then on the other condition, I have something that might help you, if I can find In number 10, if you were inclined to go with what the applicant is suggesting, the third sentence goes, "as allowed by code," and then you would strike everything up to "building," common, and instead of excluding, you would put "including," because that would be part of the allowed outdoor storage. And then the rest of it, I believe, works. So if you want to think about that for a second?
Thank you, Vern.
Welcome.
Vern, can you, Commissioner Weiskie, I'd like to comment. What was the thought process behind the equipment in the buildings?
Well, in the staff report, we indicated that there are a couple ways of screening the equipment and the construction materials, which are generally not as visually pleasing as materials in storage bins or landscape materials. And one would be to screen it with fencing around the perimeter of it, where it is, just like around these areas here or on the edges, so that it's screened from view from the residential area, or to put it in a building. The building is what's required by code to screen that sort of stuff. So from our perspective, that would be the most appropriate way, but if you're so inclined to modify that, to either screen it with a fence or just delete that requirement altogether because you believe that the site is properly screened, then those are kind of three options that you could go with. But the building is what is required by code.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vern, can I, Commissioner Locke, this is kind of changing the subject, but really quickly, and this might be a question for Bill, I don't know, what's the speed limit on Coggins Road right now?
I believe it's 25.
25?
Yes.
And according to this, signage is going to have to say that it's now 15, where are the signs? Bill, maybe you know?
I'll let Bill explain how that would...
The intent of the signage wasn't to reduce the speed limit. I mean, the speed limit will remain at 25. We just wanted to provide a warning mechanism for that approach, knowing that trucks would be utilizing that approach, so that the traffic, the cross-traffic, would know that there are trucks entering the roadway in that area. It tends to help reduce speeds in those areas, you know, as they're looking out for trucks and approaching the roads, and so I, again, a couple of mentions about the site distance at that approach. The site distance, actually, they are correct, is the subdivision just to the north of that. Whistler Court is what's shown, but I don't have the street that actually hits Coggins. The site distance there is probably, is less than the site distance at this approach, because the curve they're talking about is just north of that subdivision's approach. So the signs, again, could be spaced far enough out, might help reduce the speeds at that driveway as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Thanks. John, just a quick question. So, how wide, maybe you can, just for the record, how wide is that roadway?
We measured it 25, the alleyway?
Yeah, the alleyway.
25, no parking.
25, no parking?
Right.
And obviously, nobody intends to park on it?
Right.
And this is, this is not for commercial? This is just for them to go in and out of? I mean.
Just their daily operation, right. No wholesale sales, no retail sales, any of that, right?
And then, it looks like it drives all the way around, so I'm hopeful that there won't be a lot of backup noise going on? Is that what's intended here?
You mean the little loop?
Yeah.
Yes, that was part of our concept, so that they could come in, grab materials, and make the loop and run out, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
John, I have a question for you. What about the other entrance, the one way through the railroad right away there? Is that a possibility or?
It is a possibility. We've contacted the Fantasia Pet Resort right here. They said they're willing to grant an access easement to Ricardo, but we, they don't have a transferal easement from, it's actually a license from UP Railroad, so that's when we made application for a crossing. That decision is still pending.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
John, before you step down. Let's go back to my conditions and our wording that we were working on.
Okay.
Vern's final recommendations for condition nine. Are you, if, if line five, we strike the, starting with the sixth word, 10-foot tall, strike that?
He said, didn't he say, starting at east, Vern? East and south shall be 10-foot tall.
Okay, so, so, so strike, east and south shall be 10-foot tall, Vern? Is that what you heard?
No, just take out 10-foot tall.
That's what I thought.
Shall be evergreen trees.
Take out 10-foot tall. So the east and south shall be evergreen trees. That's what, that's how that would read?
It's fine, yes.
Okay? And then Vern, what was your recommendation for the bottom so that it specifically talks about meeting code?
The last sentence, it says, all evergreen trees required to be installed, and then we would take out adjacent to the south and north and the residentially zone probably to the west, just that would be from adjacent to west. Then it would reach.
Shall meet code.
The code standard.
Okay.
Seven, six, three.
Thank you. Mr. Kompadik, are you okay with that?
Yes, yes, we're okay with that.
Okay.
And similar, he changed the one word on number 10, right?
Okay.
From excluding my language, and then he changed excluding to including, and we're okay with that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for working with me on that.
Of course, thank you.
Commissioner O'Leary, you have any questions or?
I'll make a motion.
Before you do that, can we do disclosures on this project? And we'll start with you.
Sure, let me get my notes. So I visited the site, I spoke with a Kim Hum compiler, I hope I'm saying that right, at 1258 Leopard Street. She was not opposed to it. Her property backs up, she's right on that emergency access entrance there, her property backs up to it, and she wasn't opposed to it. And then I also spoke with John Kompadik on the telephone.
Commissioner Locke, let's see, I've visited the site twice now and read several emails.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Commissioner O'Leary, I spoke with applicant's representative, I've visited the site, and also received and read several emails.
Commissioner Wiskey, I spoke with the applicant's representative, visited the site, and have read several emails.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I've visited the site, had several emails, and I did talk to the applicant. Before we go for a motion, I have one more question for Bill. One of the speakers talked about a stop sign as right before the entrance, so cars would have to stop, wouldn't come around that corner if a car, a truck was pulling out. What's status with that?
It would, it would be a request to our Public Works Department for any sort of traffic revisions to an existing street, which would be Coggins Road, if they were to ask, you know, for a stop sign on Coggins at their, at their, at their street entrance, they could do so. It's a request to, to Public Works through the website. There's, there's the ability for them to, to make that request. Public Works would review it and make any changes if necessary, if they deem so. They would do the study.
Or the NAB could do that?
The NAB can make that request, yes.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, Commissioner O'Leary? Reno, I'm sorry.
Let me get organized here for a second. First off, I'd like to say, you know, John has done his homework here, and he has met with the, the neighborhood, and he's done a good job facilitating a fix here, and, and he's done what he can to meet all the demands and all the needs of the neighborhood. And so for that reason, I, based upon the compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit and variances subject to conditions. Sorry, this is case number LDC 1300050, summer scape landscaping.
If you could please expand on your findings during your motion?
Oh, sure. I would say that it's in substantial compliance with the master plan, finding number B. And of course, all the findings, I can make all the findings.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Locke, I'll second that. Specifically, I can meet findings D, the proposal adequately mitigates traffic impacts of the project and provides a safe pedestrian environment, and G, project signage is in character with project architecture and is compatible with or complementary to surrounding uses, and I can also make the rest of the findings.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like discussion before we vote on this.
Okay, Mr. Wiskey, go ahead.
Thank you. I can't vote, cannot vote in favor of this the way the motion was made, because it did not include the condition, the changes to the conditions that we just spoke of this evening. So therefore, I would be voting against it unless Commissioner Reno and Commissioner Locke will revise their motions and second. Thank you.
Sorry, I should have included the amendments as so constituted. Does that work? Do I need to expand more?
You have to say.
Amendments to, adjustments to items number nine and 10 as so discussed and agreed upon.
Commissioner Locke, seconds.
Okay, now I have a revised motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any action taken by the Planning Commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance, or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person entity must make his, her, its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the Planning Commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All the other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the Planning Commission's We'll open public hearing on the next item, which is LDC 1300061, Demontie Ranch, Village 10 and 11. Would the applicant's representative?
Gabriel Whitler, Odyssey Engineering, representing TD Demontie LLC and Deal Rito Construction. Proposed project is Demontie Ranch, Village 10 and 11, obviously within the Demontie Ranch master plan community. The proposed project is located in northeast corner of Demontie Ranch. A month ago, we brought forward an eight-unit tentative map was located right here at the existing entrance to this private gated community. The proposed 406 units contains private streets within, again, private gated community. The limits of the gated community include the red portion and this existing Village This is a close-up of the proposed boundary. It's approximately 146 acres total. Roughly 50 acres of that is open space or common areas denoted by the green areas, which is a common area, and slope buffer. The blue is a divided landscaped entry road. This is a common area, which includes clubhouse facilities for the gated community. The brown is a drainage way that bisects the site. The different colored villages represent different products. It's a mixed residential zoning within the handbook currently, allows up to 30 units an acre. We're currently just under three with this mixed product as proposed. The staff report, I think, sums up the project pretty clearly. Again, it's part of the master plan community, so infrastructure, roadways, utilities, et cetera, necessary to facilitate the site are already in place. It's, it's just an extension of the existing master plan and existing communities. We agree with the conditions as proposed by staff, and at that time, I'll open up to any questions you may have, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, staff?
For the record, Bill Goss, Senior Civil Engineer. Gabe pretty much touched on all my presentations, so staff does concur with applicant's presentation of the tentative map. It's for 406 residential units, as you mentioned. It is the completion of the gated community, private residential area, and so they do have a single entrance to that. The project was not presented to the Ward 2 South NAB, but a copy of the application was provided to all of the NAB members, and we did not receive any comment from the NAB members. RTC had no regional traffic concerns for this as well. We got response from, from the school district that they have capacity, and some of the schools, the elementary school does not have capacity, and they would bus until the elementary school would be, would be built. We received two phone calls regarding the application, one requesting some further information regarding the access road to Sunny Hills, which we recently visited, and then the second one was concerned about emergency access to it, was because it does have a single entrance point. I wanted to point out that Bucephalous Parkway, which is the single entrance point, is being extended down throughout the, throughout the section here, and it's designed basically as a, as a double entrance point, as a 25-foot roadway with a 10-foot median and a 25-foot roadway the other side. Fire considers that two access points, so they are very happy with the design as proposed. No other comments were received. With the proposed conditions, staff can make all the findings and recommends approval of the tentative map. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Now we'll open public comments on this project. Is there anybody in the audience? Michelle, do you have any requests to speak?
No, I do not.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to talk on this project? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close public comments. Could we have disclosures, please?
Commissioner Locke, I visited the site.
Commissioner Wiskey, I visited the site.
Commissioner O'Leary, I'm familiar with the site, I haven't visited over the years, but not recently for this, and did look at it on, on the Google Maps.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I did visit the site also. Okay, any questions by the commissioners, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question for the applicant. With this proposed plan, does it change the overall count for the PUD down there?
Gabriel Whitler, Odyssey Engineering, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
The, this being one of the, the last portions of the Demontie Ranch to be developed is one of the reasons why, being up here, there's, there's a couple areas of undeveloped area, but as the ranch is built out, typically in a development like this, when the master plan has an overlay and you're allotted X amount of units, and as you build out, you typically don't, don't, don't reach that, and so that's, the handbook, handbook was amended a while back to increase the density in these areas to accommodate for the shortage of developed units, if you will, so. And it's actually, like I said, we're at under three units an acre, the overall area, and we're allotted up to 30, so.
Very good, thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In the case of LDC 13-00061, Demontie Ranch, Village 10 and 11, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to the conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
I'll second that.
Can you make all the finding? Yeah, we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Five to zero, Michelle.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Any action taken by the Planning Commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person entity must make his or her its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days and the Planning Commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fees. All other matters will be forwarded to the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, with the, to the city council with the Planning Commission's recommendations. We'll now open case number LDC 13-00060, red, for public hearing. Would the applicant's representative please?
Hold in the restroom.
Excuse me?
The applicant's in the restroom. He stepped out for a second.
He stepped out?
Yes.
My name's Nicole Barker, for the record. This is a little tall for me. I was born and raised in Reno, in the northwest. I'm excited to say that after I'm excited to say that after two years of planning and saving, my husband Doug and I are ready to open our own restaurant. I have been a passionate member of the service industry for nearly fifteen years and currently work for the El Dorado. I am the president and founding member of the United States Bartenders Guild Reno Chapter, an organization that focuses on networking, education, community strength, and professional camaraderie. I've competed in many national level competitions, been recognized in local and national publications, and am a driving force in the local craft cocktail movement. I'm here tonight hoping to gain your support for a special use permit that will allow our newly acquired building to be renovated into a fine dining restaurant space. 585 Elgin was formerly Polka Dot Daycare Center. The staff report paints a picture that this property is a residential duplex. This property has been wired and plumbed to be one facility. Renovations were done to exclude shower and include four child-sized toilets. The kitchens exclude stoves and ovens. This property has been used commercially for over thirty years. It has commercial zoning, which disqualifies it for duplex financing. This is not a residential duplex, as implied in the staff reports. It is now a rundown building on the corner of Sixth and Elgin that has been sitting vacant and unkept since last year. In reference to residential adjacency, the six-unit apartment complex at 1350 West Sixth Street is zone neighborhood commercial, as is the duplex at 1345 West Sixth Street, making the only adjacent residentially zoned property, the duplex at 565 Elgin Avenue, and it's own MF30 for multifamily apartment use. According to the residential adjacency standards in 1812304, residential adjacency applies to all developments in non-residential, mixed-use, and multifamily zoning districts that abut single-family zoned property. By definition, the standards do not apply to our property. Since there are no single-family zoned properties that abut 585 Elgin, we should not be subject to the residential adjacency standards. With the exception of 565, all of the adjacent property owners are choosing to use their properties as apartments. Due to the zoning, the surrounding properties could potentially host a variety of different concepts in the future. The concept that we hope to bring to Reno is exciting, and should we gain your approval, our property will become Red, a Creole fusion restaurant. There will be lunch and dinner service that includes traditional Creole and southern dishes with worldly influence. We will use quality foods and partner with local businesses to deliver farm-fresh ingredients. Red will serve lunch Sunday through Friday, dinner seven days a week, and brunch on Sundays. The wine list will be esoteric and feature import selections from around the world. The cocktail program will be creative and introduce new concepts to the Reno market. The highlight at Red will be the service, which will redefine hospitality in Reno. Red will also offer pairing dinners and feature fun and educational classes for guests. We are excited to create jobs, offer new experiences to locals, and to help drive tourism in Reno. In working with the city planning staff, we have further shaped our vision and overcome obstacles in the planning of this project. Their suggestions and influence have helped us in determining what we think will be best for our business, our guests, our neighbors, and our community. The city planners have recommended that we drastically reduce our hours of operation. We understand the importance of being good neighbors and have taken time to speak with many of the residents surrounding the property. We have several statements saying that they support the restaurant and understand the nature of the hours of operation and are not opposed. Many are happy to have a new restaurant in their neighborhood and want to see the old property renovated. The reason for the choice of hours and wanting to have the flexibility to stay open till 12:00 a.m. on the weekdays and 2:00 a.m. on the weekends is to meet a demand that is currently unmet. Our hours of operation will fill a neglected niche. There's virtually no late-night fine dining in Reno. Most establishments that serve fine cuisine are closed by 9:00 p.m., even on the weekends. In my experience, this is a common complaint of both locals and tourists. Red will offer the community a late-night dining option that extends beyond fast food and diners. There will be full white tablecloth service until closing, allowing locals and tourists the option of late-night dining, high-end service. As a fine dining restaurant, we will be not creating the noise volumes associated with a bar or nightclub. We have no intention of becoming a nightclub or music venue. Our cocktail list will be a designer list with appropriate pricing. Our target market will be focused, will not be focused on a rowdy college crowd or younger kids. No smoking signs will be posted and enforced. In a fine dining atmosphere, smoke is not an ideal outcome. All in all, this concept is a fine dining restaurant, not a bar. We feel that that is within reason to be able to stay open as late as our neighboring businesses. The Big Horn Grill is open until 2:00 a.m. with residential adjacency to single-family houses. The Gateway Inn has 24-hour check-in. The gas station is open 24-hour with residential adjacency. Starlight Bowl is open until 1:00 a.m., Pizza Hut until 11:00 p.m., and CVS until 10:00 p.m. When this location was a daycare facility, they opened as early as 6:00 a.m., generating noise and traffic volumes. The planning staff is recommending that we close at 9:00 p.m. on the weekdays and 10:00 p.m. on the weekends. We have firsthand experience with our neighbors. We understand the demographic of the young students and transient population that surrounds our property and their needs and concerns. This limiting of hours is unreasonable and unwarranted in our neighborhood. It will stifle our business and lessen the hours that our employees could be working and that our business could be generating revenue. We are only asking for what our neighboring establishments already have. The next concern from the staff planners is about parking. We have met our requirement for eighteen spaces, following the staff's suggestions of off-site parking and the ability to use fifty percent of our requirement as street parking. Our first choice for off-site parking was the obvious choice, the CVS. However, our need of eight spaces is not substantial enough to generate enough income to be worth their efforts. However, we have come to an agreement with the locally-owned Reno Lodge 14 at the Oddfellows Building. The Oddfellows raise money for local charities and help people in need, focusing on community well-being. We're happy to have reached an agreement with them, as we would rather contribute to local business than large corporations. In exchange for paving the undeveloped section of their property, they will allow us to use the required amount of spaces. This relationship is mutually beneficial and will help the area as a whole. We have submitted the revised plan to the city planners that reflect the wishes for angles and spacing. Local traffic engineer Paul Soleggi has issued a traffic report showing the availability of thirty-three street parking spaces, of which eighty-five percent were vacant the entire time during the study. This is in addition to the twelve spaces in the off-site parking lot and the handicap space that is on our property. We intend to have our employees park in the off-site lot and plan to adequately inform guests of their parking options. Requiring employees to park in the off-site lot opens up more street spaces for our guests and minimizes the impact of people walking past the apartment complex. Although we will be employing twenty-five people, not all of them will be working at the same time. The foot traffic and noise volumes, noise, sorry, noise levels in a large apartment complex are already inherent. This is not a quiet neighborhood by any means. Our impacts will be minimal in an already heavily populated area. We have talked with many of the neighboring residents and have their support and understanding of the increase in parking volume. The adjacent properties are multifamily use, and most have their own designated private parking spaces. Although we realize that Midtown is a different district, there are many restaurants with far less parking than we propose to offer. As stated on the Midtown Reno website, Midtown comprises a unique combination of businesses using historic homes for business and new modern construction that blend into the neighborhood. Is it safe to say that this economic growth can't be seen in other areas of Reno? Would we have seen this strong economic force that is now in Midtown ten years ago? Our community is growing and changing. Our restaurant proposes to further that development. The city staff has expressed concern about the distance of our off-site parking lot, in that it is four hundred feet away. The city of Reno does not have a requirement for a distance of off-site parking. However, in cities that do, the standard is between five hundred and a thousand feet. We are confident in the parking availability per our traffic study, and will strive to always be good neighbors. We will have a managerial parking plan that includes signs that inform our guests of their parking options and ask their cooperation in being courteous to our neighbors, and will work with the city to meet standards on curb cuts and repairing the broken-down sidewalks. We will continue to reach out to our neighbors, letting them know that we intend to prevent our guests from parking in their private spaces. In response to the police report, we can comply with the request to install surveillance in the off-site parking lot. Our property will be well-lit at night. Our large front windows will have open visibility during business hours, and we will be going above and beyond in the renovation of the property. It is our intention to have a desirable-looking exterior and interior for our business. We will work with our neighboring businesses and residents. We will offer the first line of contact for parking or noise complaints. We realize that this is not a perfect neighborhood. An old rundown neighborhood needs revitalization. They need newer and better things to improve and grow. This is not the time to stifle new business due to slight imperfections or personal biases. We have a strong concept and the drive to succeed. We hope that the planning commission recognizes our sincere intentions, expertise, and willingness to work with the community to create jobs, meet requirements, better an area of Reno that needs it, and to help drive locally-owned business and tourism in Reno. This community needs small town, small local business, needs old properties to be reborn, and needs jobs to be created. We are here saying that we are willing to work with the city, meet the requirements, do the work, and put in the time and money. We are only asking for your opportunity to do it here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening again, Frank Close, Senior Planner. The primary issues associated with this project are related to residential adjacency as a site is directly next to residential uses on three sides, to the north, west, and south. This fact, in conjunction with on-street parking and remote parking, potential noise issues associated with the use and the extended hours proposed, staff believes this project would represent an unnecessary intrusion into this primarily residential area. There's not sufficient buffering between the adjacent residential uses to mitigate the project impacts. Therefore, staff is unable to make findings A, B, E, and F, as the project is proposed. Should the commission decide to approve the project, there are conditions attached to the staff report that would reduce the impacts of the project. Staff did receive five phone calls and three emails in opposition. The three emails were also provided to you tonight in hard copy form. And also, in your staff report, there were nine statements in support of the project as indicated by the applicant. Basically, this is, from our perspective, putting a restaurant in a house, I know it's not being used as a house or duplex now, that wasn't what we were looking at. We're looking at how changing it to a restaurant with extended hours and on-street parking would affect the residential area, which basically surrounds the site. Based on those concerns, staff is unable to recommend approval as proposed. Staff is, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Frank. For the commissioners, could we have disclosures, please? Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey, I read three emails that were forwarded to me from staff. I also received a phone call from the applicant, which I did not retrieve until late this afternoon and did not have a chance to return it. And I drove the site.
Commissioner Olivas, I spoke with the applicant. I received several emails, and I drove the site.
Commissioner Locke, I drove the site and received several emails.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant, and received emails.
Commissioner Kaufman, I visited the site and also received emails. This time, would like to open up public comments for this project. I do have some requests to speak. Roger Lewis?
I own a property catty-corner on Sixth Street from the proposed site, and therefore am quite concerned about what might be happening at this particular location. There are several concerns I have, and because of those concerns, I oppose this particular proposal. One concern is the parking. The off-site parking that was suggested is over two blocks away from the restaurant, and as such, certainly patrons are not going to favor parking in that location and walking two blocks rather than parking in the street right across from the entrance. So I think the parking concerns are really something that needs to be addressed, and we need to be aware of that kind of issue. I'm also quite concerned about a restaurant that is going to be serving alcohol. There are many children that live in that area, on children that range from preschool to young adult, and there's always concern about what may or may not happen with regard to alcohol-serving places, and certainly not what's happening inside the building, but what might be happening as patrons leave and have perhaps had a little more alcohol than they needed on that particular evening. The extended hours just exacerbates that particular concern, and noise that would result from not only these patrons, but also from the restaurant itself is of real concern. Some of the apartments are quite close to the proposed site, and minor amounts of noise would really be quite significant to those particular individuals. Also, if you know anything about the restaurant business, there's going to be cleaning up every night, which means the clanging of bottles and cans in garbage containers outside of the facility, and that would be extremely noisy, even at nine o'clock. Certainly, at two o'clock, it would be quite uncalled for. So I have those kinds of concerns for it, and I certainly oppose the request.
Let's see, Fabio, and I know I'm gonna...
Casas Grande.
Okay, thanks.
Fabio Casas Grande, I'm the owner-manager of 1350 West Sixth Street, which lies directly adjacent to the west of the proposed project. Reasons, concerns for opposition in which will cause a negative impact to the area. Some of these points revert back to your staff. Point A through G, not to be repetitive of Mr. Lewis, but obviously, the traffic impacts of the influx, naturally, people are going to gravitate or migrate to the closest point of entrance of the property. As Mr. Lewis said, instead of going two blocks, they will park closer to the establishment. Going back to the initial application that was submitted for this in the residential adjacency impact report, it was compared to the childcare business that existed years ago, and I don't see, personally, I don't see any comparison to that, whether, in being that the hours of operation were basically six to five or six to seven p.m., but the major influxes of traffic happened between seven and eight a.m. during drop-off, and five and six p.m. during pickup for kids. So I'm, in conjunction with that, with the hours, I don't know if they still stand nine a.m. to two a.m. That is a question. I don't know if they still stand from the initial application, but I'm not understanding the two a.m., since it's a proposed restaurant, not a bar. In turn, that restaurant hours shouldn't be going till two a.m. The proposed signage on G on the staff report is a question and a concern. Is it front, side, rear lit up? How's it going to affect tenants? Once again, being that I am directly adjacent, and West Sixth Street is uphill, it is basically elevated from the project, and I'm concerned with lights, signage, noise, smoke, food orders, tenants, the servants, et cetera. And in turn, these petitions, I don't know if we have access to them, to see how many people sign the petitions that are residents, that sign these petitions, that they're okay with the project, because I've instructed my tenants to not sign them. They have been approached and have been offered drinks if they sign the petitions, but I've instructed them not to sign them. In terms of the comparing Gateway and the Boeing Alley, I don't feel that's a comparison due to those businesses being strictly commercial and having ample parking. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, Ed Hocks?
I would say Boeing Alley.
Or, Ed Hawkins?
I would say Boeing Alley.
Okay, is in opposition. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to comment, make a public statement on this project? Okay. You can come up and state your name, but you will need to fill out one of these forms with Michelle when you're done, please.
All righty. My name's Douglas Barker. I'm the applicant, Nicole's husband. I'm actually the one who went around and talked to the tenants of the neighboring properties. Nobody I talked to was a homeowner. I hadn't talked to the manager next door. I did talk to several of his tenants, two of which wrote us statements that he's questioning. As, as far as offering people free drinks, that's not the case. I offered to buy a guy that lived in his complex a free drink after he wanted to tell me how great he thought everything was, and I spent about twenty minutes talking to him. So I just wanted to clarify those things, and so we were reaching opposition, and it seemed like we were out, you know, like we were offering people cigarettes to show up at the polls or something when that definitely wasn't the case. Thank you.
Thanks. Sir, come up and please state your name, and then again, fill out a...
Okay. Greetings. My name's John Naught. I'm a returning veteran soldier medic. I'm thankful to be home. And I just would like to note that I am a born and raised Reno, Nevada, and I went, I, this is my old neighborhood growing up, interestingly enough. I grew up off of West Seventh and Everett Drive, just northwest Reno area. And the area, I commend them on, on wanting to have a, a small business. That's the backbone of America. I like that, that mindset. However, I kinda have to agree that the neighborhood may not be good fit, particularly with that location, the distance of the walk, safety, safety concerns. There are some, there's been some concerns growing up as a kid. I remember riding a skateboard a lot down in the vicinity. And however optimistic, perhaps it could work. I, I just don't see it working out as the statement was provided. Maybe a few addendums, but it's creative. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, again, see Michelle, please. Is there anybody else that'd like to make a comment?
Can I ask an additional question?
Sir, we gave you...
That, it wasn't addressed?
Three...
In the presentation?
I'm sorry, we gave you three minutes, and thank you. With that, I'll close the public comments, bring it back to the commissioners. Questions for the applicant? Questions for staff?
Commissioner Locke, I have a question for staff. My, my main concern, as the gentleman just pointed out who spoke, is safety. So, I don't know if I missed this, but what about the windows? Was the applicant proposing to enlarge the windows at all, or was that, the windows were going to stay?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, you could probably ask that question of the applicant, but in reviewing what their comments were to the police, it did not appear that they were going to do that, but I could be wrong. You could clarify that with them, because I, it did not appear that they were. They thought that the windows they had were appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Vern, while you're up there. Commissioner Kaufman, is there, I'm looking at the map. Is there any parking onsite?
There is one handicap space. That's, that's all that you could fit on. They had proposed a couple spaces in this area here, but it would have required them to back into the street, which is not allowed by code, so they would have had to request a variance. But the handicap space here with some minor modifications could function, but all the rest of the parking is either on the street or off-site down by the Oddfellows Building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up question for Vern on the street parking. Vern, are any of the adjoining or adjacent or nearby apartments, are, are they allotted on-street parking as part of the parking for, for their facilities? After driving the neighborhood, I was concerned, as we've heard from some of the neighbors this evening, that on-street parking is at a premium, which kind of leads me to believe that some of the adjacent apartments may have a parking.
Vern Close, Senior Planner, the areas where they proposed to do on-street parking are shown on the exhibit there in yellow.
Right.
And this is, this is the site. In looking at, this is a duplex, that's a duplex, that's a sixplex, this is a larger apartment building, but it looked like all of those uses had at least one onsite space for each unit. I don't know if they, I mean, these, these are probably built in the seventies or the sixties when parking requirements were different. And my initial view of the area looked like that, in general, that the existing residential had parking, probably close to sufficient for what their use was. Our primary concern is, this is just right in a neighborhood where people are gonna, if there's an on-street parking space available, they're gonna, they're gonna park in it. And, and then also, the associated activity of people slamming the car doors, talking, coming in and out of the restaurant, that sort of thing, was, it just didn't appear to fit in this particular instance.
Thank you.
But getting back to the parking, it, it looked like there was probably enough for each of the...
Okay.
The residential.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Yeah, one of my concerns with this project was the parking being so far away from it is, those who visited the site, you could see it was, it was downhill, four hundred feet away. I just don't think anybody'd actually park there. They would park on the street. Am I not speaking loud enough? I apologize. My, my concerns with the parking down the lot by the Oddfellows and how far away it is, and I just don't think even, the workers may, you know, park down there, but I just don't think patrons would, and they would just park along the roads next to the residential, and I think it would be a nuisance. So that's, that's my thought.
Commissioner Olivas, I have a question for the applicant. How many tables were you proposing in this restaurant? I'm curious on the volume of, of parking, and how many cars approximately would be coming?
Total seats, we're looking at about sixty seats. So table-wise, that breaks down into four tops.
Sixty, okay. Follow-up question, kind of related to the parking. You did approach CVS. I think that's kind of what some of the logical questions were, and...
With CVS, as we all know, very large corporation, they weren't interested in subletting out for insurance purposes and dealing with, you know, only an eight-space use. Wasn't worth their time, really.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wiskey?
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, it was applicant. If you'd come back up. You should probably take one of these front row seats, because you're gonna get called back a few times probably. You're looking at business hours till two AM. Are, are you proposing all restaurant seating, or are you proposing some bar seating? Listen to your, your first few statements of bartending accreditation, and so I'm wanting to know, are you gonna have a bar seating area, lounge area, also?
It will be all restaurant seating. The intention is to have late-night dining. We don't want to close the kitchen at eight o'clock and keep the bar open till two. We would like to have late-night dining until two on the weekends and on, till twelve during the week. I know that I have a lot of bartender credibility, and I've been bartending for eight years. I'm ready to do something new. Yes, my cocktails will absolutely play a part in our restaurant and our theme and what we want to do, but I'm not interested in buying myself a new job that I already have.
Okay, we have, in the past, we, and it was, I believe, before us last month, there was a condition placed on an existing restaurant building that said, no cocktail service without food service as a condition. That means that at no time are you serving cocktails without having your kitchen open and serving meals to your patrons. In other words, if it's a four-top, you couldn't have four guests come in and do nothing but order just cocktails. That's a bar setting. Would you be interested or in that condition like that or, or not? Would that be different than what you are proposing?
No, that is exactly what we're proposing.
Okay.
Like I said, we're not looking to do a neighborhood bar here. This is a restaurant, and we are hoping to have fine dining service.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more question, Ms. Parker. So, are you propos, what, what types of renovations are you proposing on the actual building? Because, I mean, it's pretty rundown.
Absolutely.
Do you have, like, what are your major, you know, things that you want to do?
Well, first off, we, I mean, the lot itself, if, if you've looked at the pictures, is just, it's rundown. It's dilapidated. We're looking at landscaping, meeting all of the, those kind of requirements as far as the building goes. New roof, all-new plumbing, all-new electrical, everything, window, thanks, windows, sightings, doors, everything that you would expect. We want it to look nice. We're redoing it from the floor out.
So do you, are you guys are gonna put in bigger windows? Because I know that was a big concern.
We are changing the window configuration in the front and the middle section to accommodate a much more ideal door situation for a restaurant, but we won't be expanding the windows that are on the side lots. The pictures that the police reports we're looking at, all of the windows have blinds in them because the, it's been vacant for so long. During hours of operation, those will be open.
Thank you. I feel like it would help. I don't know. Maybe this is just me.
Can I, can I answer? Eighty percent of the, of the front of the property is windows.
Could you, you need to say your name first, please.
My name's Douglas Barker. Eighty percent of the front of the property is currently windows. We were kind of not sure what the, what the police report was referring to, besides the fact that maybe they could not see into the property because all the windows had blinds on them. But the majority of the front of the property, you could actually see from front to back of the property minus where we'll be putting the kitchen through the windows that are presently there.
Okay, thank you. So structurally speaking, you're not moving any walls or anything like that?
No, no exterior walls.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Wait a second. Sorry. In, in, Commissioner Olivas, in looking at this picture, again, it's not a more rendition, but one of the condition, or one of the findings is signage. What type of signage package would you be looking at?
On the corner of Sixth and Elgin, we were looking at a twelve-foot monument site. We feel that the sign, well, it's within the code, and the sign would be reaching out to people that are traveling on Seventh to avoid any driving around the neighborhood to be looking for the place. We want it to be very visible there. That's exterior illuminated, not interior, and we also have the sign that will be on the front side above the door.
Okay, I see it here on this other drawing. Thanks.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman? We have a question for Bill Gaul, please, city staff. Bill, you've, I'm sure the, the drawing that's up on the screen right now shows street parking, and I'm sure you've taken a look at that. How does, I mean, how do you look at that as far as car count? To me, it kind of looks tight, but I'm gonna ask the engineer to verify it.
Yeah, I looked this, the, the four spaces on, on Sixth Street on each side is a little on the tight side. The, the fourth, the sixth, the, the spaces on Elgin, I tend to agree with those spacing numbers. I think they're probably, as far as available spaces on, on Sixth Street, they're probably stretching it a little bit, especially the, the project site itself. They will have a driveway in there, which will take up part of that space. Still, if you consider, you know, Paul's report as far as number of cars and that were, they're utilizing those, those areas, he's had, they had thirty-three spaces. If you take two or three away, you're down to about thirty-one, and they had a very small use. They still have considerably more available space per the study than what they needed for the eight spaces on the street.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Locke, I have a question for Vern, and it really is for you this time. Can, is there a way that you can put up the map and, and that shows what everything is zoned? You know, what's neighborhood commercial, like, show us where the residential zoning, just so everybody can see, because I feel like I'm getting mixed information here about how much this location is actually residential adjacent. I'm not, can you just, like, walk me through?
Per, per the zoning, there's neighborhood commercial to the north, to the west, and to the east, and adjacent to the west. It's multifamily to the south, but all of the use is residential. I mean, generally, when you have an established neighborhood that has duplexes or apartments and there's own neighborhood commercial, they've probably been like that for thirty, forty years. So we're looking at the use of the property, not necessarily...
What it's zoned.
The zoning. It's, it's kind of like looking at the restaurant. We're looking at the restaurant based on what, any restaurant that could go in there, not necessarily what one person is specifically proposing to do. We have to look at the envelope of what's going in and what, if they went away tomorrow, what could happen if someone else came in that didn't want to be compliant with conditions and, and, you know, those sorts of things. So, again, in looking at the residential adjacency, it's not just zoning, it's what the use is.
Okay.
And again, residential is allowed in the neighborhood commercial zone.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey, I'll start with discussion. I have problems with the hours of operation that are being requested, and because of that, I cannot make all of the findings. And unless the applicant is willing to reduce the hours of operation, I'll...
And unless the applicant is willing to reduce the hours of operation, I can't support this, and I will be supporting staff's motion to deny this proposal.
Yeah, I too won't be supporting this, and it's not necessarily on the hours of operation. I just think it creates kind of an adverse environmental impact, specifically the noise, the pollution of odor. This is a restaurant in a neighborhood, and I just don't think it fits in this neighborhood, and those are, those are ones I specifically can, can meet, or, you know, those findings I cannot meet, so I will not be supporting this.
Commissioner Locke, you know, it's hard, because your idea is really appealing, and, I mean, I felt like the applicant did a really good job. The business sounds exciting, you know, something that might fit in midtown. But unfortunately, the old adage, "Location, location, location," I just can't see it fitting with the residential, you know, I just can't see it fitting. And honestly, I don't really know if, frankly, it's that safe, and that that's a finding that we have to make, finding D, that it provides a safe pedestrian environment, and with the off-site parking in the neighborhood, I'm just, I just think I have to support staff in this and say I can't make the findings.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add on to my statement, specifically, with the hours of operation being as late as they are, finding D, the proposal adequately mitigates traffic impacts to the project, and includes the neighbors, which goes along with adverse environmental impacts on item F, and those are the two. Now, as far as, you know, to the applicant, if this zoning was mixed use, which is what you will find in other areas, not just midtown, near the California Avenue District, other areas in what I call old historic downtown Reno, the west side of Arlington, there's mixed use in there, where this would work a lot better. The hours of operation would be something that I wouldn't, I could make the findings, and the considerations would work, but in this particular neighborhood, I just can't make those findings. Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas?
Well, Commissioner Olivas, I just think this is a challenging neighborhood. I'd like to see something go in there. I don't know exactly what, what the best use is. So, I think it's going to be tough, and with the conditions, it's, we'd have to get into the discussion of all the conditions before I could make the findings, but I'd like to see something. I don't know exactly what fits in there the best, though.
Okay, thank you. I'm the same way. I'm having trouble with D, E, and F findings, partly because of the parking, partly because of the hours. So, I don't think I can support this program, this project either. So, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC 13-00060 RED, based upon noncompliance with the applicable findings, I move to deny the special use permits based upon not being able to make findings D and F.
And do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, I'll second that. I cannot make findings A and E. Thanks.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Michelle, five to zero. Any action taken by the Planning Commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance, or Skyway is final and less appealed. Any person agreed by the decision may file an appeal. Each person entity may make his, her, or its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the Planning Commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the City Council with the Planning Commission's And with that, I think the next project that we have, I know is going to be rather lengthy, so we're going to take about a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 7:45. Public hearing on LDC 13-00059 Gaslight Lane Special Use Permit for a parcel map. I want to make sure everybody understands, this is for a parcel map, it's not for a specific project or anything. We have a lot of people who want to talk, and, you know, part of, when you get up there, make sure that we're talking on this particular topic, the parcel map. And with that, Angela?
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Angela Fuess with CFA, representing the applicant. As the chairman mentioned, the request before you tonight is a special use permit for a parcel map, and the request is to divide a 7.5-acre parcel that zoned industrial. The parcel is adjacent to a substation to the north, to the south, a tunnel water tank to the north, and residential zoning on the west side. To give you a little bit of history on this project and the zoning, the property was originally annexed into the city back in 1999. At that time, it came in as industrial. When it was in the county's jurisdiction, it was also zoned industrial. Records indicate, as far back as the early 1970s, it was used as industrial. It was a granite fabrication shop for probably a good 30 years that we have on record. University Ridge, which is the subdivision to the west, was initially approved for a subdivision back in 1988, and then it was rezoned to a plant unit development in 1996. Again, this property has been zoned industrial since the 70s. The subdivision that came in, came in in the 80s, knowing full well that it was zoned industrial. This is actually not unique. At one time, this whole corridor was zoned industrial. Our parcel is right here. This area is still zoned industrial. This piece down here is actually three parcels. It's used as a mini-storage facility, directly adjacent to single-family residential. This piece here is also industrial, directly adjacent to single-family residential on all three sides. It is used as what appears to be some kind of outdoor storage facility. Up here, we also have a handful of industrially-zoned parcels directly adjacent to single-family residential zoning. Again, the project before you tonight is simply a parcel map. There's no zone change, there's no proposed use. It is simply to put four parcels on a map. It has no uses involved, there's no impacts to development, there's no impacts to adjacent neighbors. It's lines on a map. The city has already adopted a policy related to industrial development adjacent to residential zoning, and that policy says, basically, if you have non-residential development adjacent to residential, you trigger a special use permit. However, if you're more than 300 feet away, and again, it's non-residential, then there's safe havens in the code that provide for development standards. This addresses things like traffic, and noise, intensity, and other development standards. So, anything that's more than 300 feet away has to comply with code standards, and is not part of a special use permit application. The findings before you tonight are related to a special use permit. Typically, a parcel map does not come before you as a special use permit. It's typically done at the staff level, goes through a process, and then it gets recorded. Because this project is considered adjacent to residential, a parcel map is considered development. So, when we look at the findings for a special use permit, again, there's no use. So, if we go through these quickly, is the proposed use compatible? It's a parcel map, there's no use. There's no change in use with this, there's no change in zoning with this. Is the project in substantial conformance with the master plan? The master plan is industrial. Again, this is a parcel map, this is consistent with the master plan policies for industrial zoning, and master plan land use. Will there be adequate services and infrastructure to support the proposed development? There's no proposed development. When a proposed development comes before you, we will know what those impacts will be to services and infrastructure, and they will be addressed at that time. Does the proposed, proposal adequately mitigate traffic? It's a parcel map. A parcel map does not create traffic. Uses create traffic. And again, when a use is proposed, then we know what the traffic impacts are going to be, and how to mitigate those traffic impacts. Is the proposed site location and scale, intensity, density, height, layout, setbacks, et cetera, consistent, appropriate for this area? There's no intensity, there's no density, there's no height, there's no layout, there's no setbacks, there's no articulation. It's a parcel map. Does the project create adverse environmental impacts, such as noise, glare, dust, vibration, fumes, pollution, or odor? Uses create those impacts, a parcel map does not. There's no signage proposed with this application, and there are no structures proposed with this application. Again, at such time as a use is proposed, it will come before you either as a special use permit, or it will be a permitted use, and go before the City of Reno planning staff, and they will make sure that everything meets code and development standards. I'd like to allot the remaining 10 minutes of my time to Mr. Michael Pony, who is also acting on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Angela. Members of the commission, Michael Pony, McDonnell Corona-Wilson, on behalf of the applicant. You should have all received a letter dated July 8th from me regarding this application. I would ask the clerk to incorporate that into the record. I'm not going to repeat all of the points that I've made in there, but that sets forth our position in a little more detail. What I wanted to do tonight was just emphasize for you, the legal standard that's under review tonight, what is before you and what is not before you, what you should consider, what is not appropriate to consider on this specific application. As Angela indicated, this is a parcel map, parcel map application. It's a division of land, that's it. We're not changing the zoning, we're not modifying, intensifying, altering the uses in any way, we're not seeking approval of a rock-crushing plant or a truck terminal. In fact, we're not proposing or seeking approval of any use. There is no use that's before you tonight, this is just a division of land. A lot of the confusion that may arise is because this is a special use permit application under the city code. Frankly, we believe that as a matter of law, requiring a special use permit on a parcel map is contrary to Nevada statute, and we reserve all of our rights with respect to that argument, except for in our letter. We recognize, though, that this body has to apply it and adhere to existing city code, and so that is the process that we're dealing with tonight. As Angela pointed out, as we've indicated in our letter, as your staff has recommended, it is clear that those findings can be made, and that this application should be approved. Given the unique nature of the application, and the comments that you're going to hear tonight, though, we wanted to emphasize that it is critical, you focus on what is that correct legal standard? What are the findings that do apply and don't apply, when you're just talking about a division of land? As you noticed, this parcel and this particular property has evoked a lot of passion and a lot of comment. However, none of that is legally relevant to the issues that are before you tonight. Nearly all of the opposing comments that have been submitted, and you will likely hear tonight, including those of the Homeowners Association, the railroad, and the neighbors that live in the adjacent area, all revolve around speculation and conjecture about uses that don't exist and are not proposed. These are comments that are irrelevant and premature, in our opinion. It's like objecting to a master plan amendment, because you're concerned about what the future landscaping may look like. They're focusing on step 20 in the development process, we're still talking about step one. We're urging you to remember that, we're just at step one. Please understand, we're not trying to minimize their concerns. We're just saying that this is not the time or place to bring them forward. We fully recognize that when we get to step 20, when we are there and ready to propose a developed use, we are going to have to address those concerns, we're going to have to address the use issues. We are going to have to deal with all of those things before the uses can be developed. That's what your code requires. Contrary to what the Homeowners Association has submitted, as a matter of law, we are not required to propose a use with a parcel map application, nor are you required to inquire of one, or consider one, where there's none before you. It's a completely different legal inquiry. Divisions of land are not use, these are separate items. As your staff has recognized, there's absolutely no legal requirement that we identify a use at this time, nor is it necessary to your approval tonight, and any suggestion to the contrary is completely to the opposite of longstanding law and the precedent of this city. Even if their concerns were relevant, concerns about the proximity of industrial uses near neighboring residential uses are already addressed by your code. Long ago, the City Council adopted a policy and decided what conditions and limitations and restrictions should apply where you're engaged in an industrial use near a residential area. The city has already determined that these proximate uses are allowed, they are permitted by code, and it is only when you are in an adjacent parcel, or within 300 feet, that height and review is required. None of that will change by tonight's application. Nothing in your approval here tonight will alter that fact. All of those provisions, all of those protections that exist in code will still apply, and will still need to be adhered to before that development may proceed. Again, we recognize and appreciate their concerns, it's just a matter of timing. This is not the time or place to bring these issues forward, because there just is not a use before you. We fully recognize that if and when a future development occurs, we're going to have to address those use-related issues, and we're going to have to satisfy all of development policies that are already established by your city code. And just because they're not relevant to your proceedings here tonight doesn't mean they won't get addressed. It just means that they're going to get addressed at the time and in the manner that your code requires, and that's when a specific use is brought forward. We appreciate your consideration of this application. Again, we respectfully would urge you to focus your review on what it is that's in front of you, which is just a division of land, and approve this parcel map request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. As you know, the property in this case is zoned industrial, and is located adjacent to residentially-zoned property. City code requires approval of a special use permit for any non-residential development, a parcel map in this case, located adjacent to residentially-zoned property. The proposed parcel map will result in four parcels. Parcel one is located adjacent to residentially-zoned property on the west side. Any development on parcel one would require approval of a special use permit. Parcel two include, parcel two includes the existing 11,200-square-foot building right here, and is one acre in size. Parcel three is approximately 1.94 acres, and is located in the middle of the site, and contains concrete pads and multiple access easements. Parcel four is approximately three and a half acres, and is located more than 300 feet to the east of the residentially-zoned properties in the University Ridge area, and comprises the eastern portion of the site. Applications for parcel maps only address the division of land. There is no proposed use associated with the parcel map application. Approval of a special use permit is required in order to establish certain uses within the industrial zone regardless of location. These uses are typically the more intense uses, and include, but are not limited to, a batch plant, animal processing, chemical processing, hazardous waste, mining, outdoor manufacturing processing, subject tank services, a truck terminal, and a wrecking yard. Two of these uses... Two of these uses were previously denied by the city council in March of this year and would still require approval of a special use permit to establish them even if the parcel map is approved. Other uses are allowed to be established within the industrial zone without a special use permit or site plan review if the parcel is located more than 300 feet from residentially zoned property, or the parcel is not located adjacent to but is within 300 feet of residentially zoned property and is one acre in size or less. Parcel 2 and parcel 4 meet these qualifications. The uses that would be allowed without review would be on these parcels could include indoor manufacturing processing, maintenance repair, mini warehouse, outdoor storage, indoor salvage, tow-in and impound yard, wholesale of construction materials. According to the application, there are no specific uses or specific developments proposed with the request. Therefore, it's not anticipated that parceling the property will have any impact on the area related to traffic, infrastructure, environmental, or public services. All future development of each parcel will be required to comply with city code, and depending on the use proposed and its location, other discretionary and/or administrative review will be required as outlined in the staff report in Exhibit B. Exhibit B also provides a list of all the uses in the I-zone and how they can be established based on the specific parcels that are shown in Exhibit A, which is this map right here. Should this special use permit be approved, all subsequent development on each of the parcels would be required to follow the procedures discussed in Exhibit B. All of this information was provided to the public at a Hot Topics meeting held in the city council chambers on June 10th, 2013. The parcel map has been configured to meet the minimum code requirements for parcel size 1 acre and lot width 150 feet. It also shows how access to each of the parcels can be provided. As each parcel is developed, all code requirements related to parking, landscaping, paved access, traffic signs, screening of outdoor storage, noise, lighting, et cetera, must be demonstrated. Further reviews such as a site plan review or special use permit or variance is required, then these aspects would be required to be provided with the application and could be supplemented as applicable with conditions to address impacts on adjacent and surrounding properties based on the proposed use. Restriction on days of hours of operation could also be addressed at that time. As each parcel is developed, the applicant developer would also have to show how water and sewer service can be provided and construct necessary infrastructure to provide these services. Based on staff's review of what is being requested at parcel map, we believe that all the findings necessary to approve it can be made, and we are therefore recommending approval of the project. Subsequent to publishing the staff report, additional correspondence was submitted to staff, which include a letter from the applicant's attorney, which he alluded to, a letter from the Union Pacific Railroad, which we just received today, and two project review forms in opposition to the request. Staff forwarded all this to you by email, and we also provided hard copies for you. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Vern. Commissioners, could we have disclosures, starting with Commissioner Reno?
I met with Angela Fuss, Fuss or Fuss, at yesterday and discussed the project. I also visited the site, speaking with a neighbor whose property abuts the parcel map application here. Nico Rodriguez at 1134 University Ridge. I spoke with Donna Adams on the phone, who opposes the project. That's it.
Commissioner Locke, I spoke with the applicant's representative and read many emails.
Commissioner Wieske.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too spoke with the applicant's representative. I have read or perused all of the emails that were included in our staff report, along with forwarded emails from staff after the report was put out. I drove the site and had one voicemail left in opposition.
Commissioner Locke, I drove the site, too. I walked the site, kind of.
Commissioner Olivas, I spoke with applicant's representative. I've received all the emails and read them, and I visited the site.
Commissioner Kaufman, I also visited the site, read all the emails, and had talked to the applicant's representative. And with that, we're going to open public comments. We have several that we'll just read where people wished to make a statement, either in favor or against, and we'll go through those first before we call people who wanted to come up and talk. So, for C4 Equity LLC, they are in favor.
Okay. Russ and Lori Walker, they do not wish to make a statement but are in opposition. Should I read all the comments?
Yeah, read the comments, please.
Noise, bugs, flies, birds, unsafe access. Property values, 89512, nicer area in that zip code. Unsure use and intent for property. What hours? What impact on our community? Why so secret with what it is exactly?
Robert Boom is in opposition.
George Metlenko in opposition.
Eileen Casperson in opposition. Subdividing property does not change the fact that it will not appropriate for our area.
Thomas Yessel, perhaps? Can't read that there. Does not belong in a residential development. In opposition.
Sherry Fierl. This is in opposition. The special use permit should not be passed. The landowner refuses to disclose the use of the land. The city council already opposed the original project.
Matt Lewain in opposition.
I think this is a side child is in opposition.
Britta Martini, no special permit is in opposition. No special permit to further unwanted industrial development.
And Asako Yamada, I hope I didn't butcher that name too bad, is in opposition.
Susan Kapi in opposition. I feel this subdivision should be denied as there is no statement of what the parcels will be used for, and I feel he is trying to pull a fast one, trying to skirt the regs and ordinances.
Judy Chisholm in opposition.
Tom Yessel Jr. in opposition.
Fred Arnott in opposition.
Brett Schumsky in opposition. This proposed SUP is a traffic safety hazard. Many children in school buses loading, unloading will be at risk with the increased truck traffic if the SUP is approved.
Steven Child in opposition.
David Gibbons in opposition. This project got rejected the first time around. Why are we wasting everybody's time?
David Kaufman in opposition.
Margie Custer in opposition. This was previously brought before the city council and the planning commission under a slightly different issue. Last time, the specific use was included in the at-issue proposal, and this time it is hidden. As promised, the landowner is again trying to create a business that is not compatible with our neighborhood. It was discussed that one of the possible uses was for truck maintenance on proposed site number two. The traffic congestion is a great concern. Diesel trucks will completely block access to Socrates, creating a hazard for pedestrians, as well as emergency services being blocked. I understand that the specific use is not stated for the property at this time. However, if it was difficult to find a suitable use for one property, how is it supposed to be easier for four properties? It goes on.
Amy Lilly in opposition.
Roger Pollak and Marie Pollak in opposition. Traffic, noise, pollution.
John Lilly in opposition. We live in a proactive community. The members of the community and our homes should not in any way be affected by C4 equity. C4 equity has already demonstrated devious nature and intentions and disregard our citizens. Stop C4 from ruining our neighborhood.
Noel Nash English in opposition. The environmental hazards will be, or could be, irreparable. The neighborhood should not have to sustain this type of operation. The project is not being explained to HOA to our satisfaction.
Carol Kelly in opposition.
Joan Del Piano, I oppose for many reasons, in opposition.
And I can't really read the first name. It's Nijen is the last name. They're in opposition.
Justin H. Williams in opposition. This is, do you wish to make a statement? Okay, so you're in the wrong pile. Mervin Davis, Marcella Davis in opposition. Oppose the parcel and the map division.
David Schumsky, I hope I didn't butcher that too bad. Business owner has shown that he is unscrupulous, untrusty, untrustworthy. He will never be welcome in our neighborhood and receiving. He will be for adverse use.
Okay, this is a, last name Metzcher, Metcher, W, first initial, in opposition.
And Teresa Quanta is in opposition. Again, you have three minutes when you come up to the podium. I know there's a lot of people that want to make comments. Some of them will be repetitious if, so we can get through these. If somebody else has already said what you want, make sure that you say that. But again, if you'll stick to the topics, these are for the map change. There's no project. So, with that, is it Josh William? Did I get that right? Justin Williams?
I said a lot about this project in the five pages of emails you have on the record, and I feel bad for you all because it's 200 pages of stuff to go through, and I had a headache and a hard time trying to get through it myself. But it's important. It's very important to those of us who live there and those of us who use the area, running, walking, driving through there. Yeah, keep in mind, Socrates is one of only two ways in and out of that hill. I live at the top of the hill. One of the concerns I always have is fire or other need to evacuate residents off that hill. There are only two ways out. You divide up that one parcel into four parcels. You create four times as many possibilities for impacting the traffic on a road with a significant grade and a very difficult curve, a curve that kind of lends itself to traffic being clogged and pedestrians getting hit. The idea that these are just lines on a map, that's what the applicant's representative says, and lines on a map are nothing. This means nothing. I think lines on a map are everything, especially if you're trying to get somewhere and you read the map wrong and you don't get to where you're going. Lines on a map mean a lot to you. If you live on a border of a neighbor who's unruly or a nuisance, if you live on the border of a town, or a county, or a country, lines on a map are everything. These aren't just lines on a map. This is a way to get to where they want to go. And where they want to go is, well, they say it's nowhere. We have no idea where we want to go. Nobody gets in a car and says, "I don't know where I want to go." They've gotten in a car, they've looked in the lines in the map, and they said, "If we draw them this way, we can do this, this, and that." They know where they want to go. That pretension is sort of ridiculous, but these lines on the map do allow them to do things differently. These lines on the map allow them to escape the special use process. This is a use. It's, the lines that they've drawn, that's a use. The division of the parcel is a use. It's a process and development. They've acknowledged this is the first step in the development of something bigger. This is a use. This is why we're here. So, we're not going to, I'm not going to keep coming down here so people can just tell me. We're not really supposed to be here because this isn't a use. This is a use. They want to divide up this parcel, he said, so he can make the property more salable. Well, sell it and let whoever buys it decide what they want to do with it. Until then, you need to decide.
Thank you. Folks, folks, no applause. If you want applause for somebody, applause for the commissioners, but no applause for... The next one is Gloria Alco. Okay, sorry. And then after that, it'll be Colin McCord.
My name's Gloria Alanco, and I bought my property in 2005. It's my retirement home. The air is clear up there, and it's quiet, and for senior citizens like myself, there's a close proximity to town. A bunch of people that live in University Ridge bought for the exact same reason. We can look down over the city and see the haze. When there's a fire from California, we can see it, but it's not where we are. We're scared because of the proposed uses that were there before. We're scared that our air quality is going to diminish, that we have young children in the neighborhood, and we have seniors now, and we're afraid. We're afraid. I realize that, and the fact that Angela Fuss made a threat at the last city council to, if this is overthrown, we'll just subdivide it and then we can do whatever we want. Every one of us know that. Every one of us heard it, and we are scared that she is, that the owner is going to follow through with that. I just think that industrial next to this much development is incompatible. If this was Collin Ranch or someplace like that, it wouldn't even be considered, and I think that perhaps maybe we ought to look at the master plan, and maybe industrial isn't even suitable for that parcel. Thank you.
Okay, Colin McCoy, then after that, Lee McCord.
My name is Colin McCord, 3476 Weaver Place. She's kind of summed it up on why I'm up here is because the applicant has not been real straightforward on what's been going on. They did make the threat that they were going to do whatever they wanted to do if we didn't step aside with the city council. Then they would divide it up. Well, I'm here to talk, that's why I'm here. I'm here to talk about sound. Sound is frequency and pressure. Some sounds, such as backup alarms, high frequency is a high frequency. A ball bouncing is a low frequency. There's variables... a ball bouncing is a low frequency. There's variables in sounds, direction of the wind, weather. I've compiled information from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Commission, Construction Noise Handbook 9.0, construction equipment noise levels and ranges, the EPA Environmental Protection Agency and engineering and designs. Kind of familiarize you real quick with, that's upside down. Familiarize you with some familiar sounds.
Sir, I hate to interrupt you, but
Can you speak into the mic?
You know, we're trying to go on this specific
I did.
Yeah, and that's what they're going to do.
We don't have any projects in front of us and we would like, you know, the comments really to be toward what's in front of us.
Well, I'm coming to the end. It has a lot to do with this 300 feet they keep talking about. If you want to bear with me, if you don't.
Okay.
Anyway, that's just to give you some idea, some familiarization with some sounds. Engineering's acceptable sound levels. This is what you want to hear. You want to be able to have 30 decibels.
Mr. McCord, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. 30 decibels in your bedroom, living room. You can read as it gone down the chart. Here's the one from the Environmental Protection Agency. This is what they project or want you to living, what people want to be living by. Pretty low sounds. Voice to voice is 65 decibels. So we're talking some pretty low sounds. That chart, the map they had up there, this is the residential area here. This is the west boundary of parcel one. This is the west boundary of parcel four, 301 feet. Give you some idea, I didn't grab these, these numbers are from the U.S. Department of Transportation. All of equipment and things that would happen on an industrial piece of property. These are DB measurements at 50 feet. Well, you can't see it in red, but the ones on the left are the DB descending levels, sound travels that gets lower. At 300 feet, those are the descending levels. And if there's more than one piece of equipment running, that's what, you add three decibels to the descending levels and that would give you the decibels. So at 300 feet, we're going to be well above the 65 decibels that gaslight or C4 equities is not to exceed.
You need to wrap it up, please.
That's it.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just remind everybody also, if you're showing exhibits, if you could please submit them to the clerk over here on the side for the record. If, for anybody, if you've, or if you're showing any exhibits, please submit them with the clerk over on the side for the record.
Okay, Lee McCord. And after that, Marvin Mandanka.
Hi there. Last time I was here, months ago.
Please state your name.
Pardon me?
Please state your name.
Lee McCord. Last time I was here, I was kind of taken by surprise, well, I was taken by surprise. And I asked you guys if you were nuts because what you were looking at doing. What I need to do for me tonight is to state, Mr. Close.
Ma'am, please address us. You're addressing us.
Okay. Mr. Close stated at that planning meeting that anything that was going on with C4 equity there would not exceed 65 decibels. That is totally incorrect. Your traffic manager acted like it was just a big joke, no big problem. We don't need to do a study, blah, 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 blah. Totally, totally against the residents in that area. Barbara Carson said that she owned a residence there. Residence, I believe, is someplace that you live in. Unless she's got her home underground, I can't find it. Troy Carson, he stated that there is, where he's located now in, wherever it's at, in Tahoe, he stated that there has been no complaints by homeowners there. Well, of course, there's no complaints because there's no homeowners. So I think all of you had misinformation from Mr. Close, from the traffic manager and from the Carson people. And I needed to say that because it was done unfairly. Also the fact, look at the amount of people that are here tonight. Who was here at the other planning commission, the first one? My husband and I, that was it. Because you did not state what it truly was going to be about. It was called a truck transfer. What is that? Nobody knows. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. Again, Marvin Mandanka. And then we have Jim North.
Hi, I'm Marvin Mandonson and I live on University Ridge Drive. I've been there for 13 years and I'm just
Marvin, could you move that, yeah, so we can hear you? Thank you.
Do you want me to start again?
Nope, you're good.
Okay. I've lived there for 13 years and all I'm concerned about is the house value. Start cutting up the parcels, just putting lines on there, that's not going to stop there. And it's not going to be residential, I'm afraid. And it's going to bring the house prices down in the whole area, not just one spot. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, Jim North, followed by James LaCroix. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim North. I own a number of properties in University Ridge. I'm on the board of directors for the University Ridge Homeowners Association. And I'm a real estate broker and have been for over 30 years. I'm going to read this, otherwise I'll forget what I'm doing. Usually, the sole reason for making a split of a parcel is that the expectations that the resulting value of the smaller parcels will be greater than the original parcel. Otherwise, why bother doing it? Looking at the proposed splits, it's very hard to determine where the extra value will be coming from as opposed to the entire property and especially in the ways Jerry managed the different properties. Now, as you have heard people say, if we look at the larger picture here, you've heard people say, that testified that in a meeting between the University Ridge homeowners and C4, one of their representatives stated to the effect that if the city council refused their project, they were going to subdivide the project and that subdivision would be to the effect that they will have buffered properties, that some properties will be outside of the 300-foot limit. That would be, that it would remove the legal requirements of having, these operations would require the special use permit and variances due to being contiguous with the PUD. They've stated that. So we know what they're going to do. They've actually stated that. They are subdividing. If we overlay if we overlay their request for parceling the larger parcel, on top of their original proposal that got turned down by the city, you'll see that we have one parcel here, parcel one, which with the exception of future water tanks, is just a buffer. It's pretty much worthless land. Parcel two encloses the existing building and some of the maintenance area. Parcel three, if you look at their original plan, now is enclosing the future two-story building, a fuel storage and more parking. Parcel four, which is now two parcels away from the PUD and more than 300 feet away from it, now encloses their public sale areas and, and the outdoor processing, which includes composting of materials brought in from outside, includes screening materials and the concrete. This, they stated they were going to do that. That's what they're doing. I think that you should deny their request because there's nothing more than an attempt to circumvent the city council's potential previous denial of their project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Becky LaCroix.
Okay. James, James LaCroix.
Can I put this here? I didn't.
All right. This is the issue that we have. Even though we're talking about imaginary lines on a map, there's a goal. Like the previous gentleman said, they know what they're doing. They're going for a goal here. Now, what they didn't show everyone, Angela didn't show that there's residents here, there's residents here, there's condos and apartments across McCarran and of course, the homes at University Ridge. This piece of property is now surrounded by residences since the last house was built in 2003. So to say that there's no adjacent homes, I mean, there's no homes, excuse me, on the east and the south and it only entails these two power grids and these sets of homes is ridiculous. It's completely surrounded by homes and it should have been at the given moment, the right moment, either rezoned or sent back to the master plan. So in my heart, the subdivision is just a loophole or a way to get under the radar to pursue further goals. And I don't believe this road here is conducive for any business at all. It's nothing but an alleyway. And by the way, there's another set of homes right here also.
And I know we're talking about a subdivision, go back to the map, but when we went to the Hot Topics meeting, they gave us the uses that once he subdivides, these are all the uses he can do, the Ps that are all highlighted without any kind of approval by you guys. Like Vern said, a truck repair and landscaping storage that doesn't fit anymore. This is now residential. They allowed these homes to be, the city, I'll say, allowed the homes to be built all around this industrial little piece, seven and a half acre piece of land. We've got storage lockers and we have Nevada Energy, but they, they don't do anything. They just sit there. They don't make a noise. They don't make dust. And I'll tell you right now, I pulled up his site because at this last city planning commission meeting when he was here saying that he just wants to do business like he does up in Incline Village, that's what he wants to do. And you should go on his website and see what he does. I've been up there. I've seen what he does. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next, David Babel, followed by Gail Kern. Do you like me to read the statement on, that you wrote? Okay, is in, David Babel is in opposition. Major safety concern, regas light, Socrates intersection, if approved, a terrible accident is inevitable.
Sir, may I make my statement anyhow?
Sure.
How do people going to change your mind? So I'm going to be the first. I would like to say this, and I've been sitting here listening to
David, please say your name.
David Babel, it's Babel, not Babel. I mean no disrespect to anyone in this hall or this chamber by what I'm going to say, certainly not to the planning commission. I've been listening to some of the things from the people that want to develop this property and I can understand they want to develop their property. Perhaps something that would be more complimentary to the area, such as another mini storage or some other sort of business that has less impact on those of us that live there. But what I'm going to say now is, it may sound disrespectful, but I don't mean it to be. I live in Reno and I don't play poker. I live in Reno and I don't play slots. I live in Reno and I don't play any gambling devices. But listening to what I've heard tonight, I know a shell game when I see one. And I hope you do too. We're talking about step one, one of the attorneys talked about. Well, when we get to step 20, then we'll be talking about all these other issues. It's step one that determines what step 20 is going to be. And that is the most important step. So I hope you see the same shell game that I see. And I'm not a gambling man. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Gail Kern, followed by Denise Edwards.
For the record, my name is Gail Kern. I'm an attorney and I represent the University Ridge Homeowners Association. I sent a letter to all of you. It was hand delivered on June 26th of this year. None of you identified it in the disclosures, so I am concerned and want to make sure that you did receive it. I have an extra copy for the record so that I will make it part of the record. In that letter, I outlined and I reiterated the fact that this is a special use permit. They can claim that it's not. They can say that it's just a parcel map, but if that's all it was, they wouldn't be here. And when you have a special use permit application in front of you, whether you want to or not, you have to make findings about what the use is. The use is not a bunch of lines on the paper. I thought that the first gentleman was very eloquent in making it clear that that is not what you are looking at. You are looking at the application for a special use permit, which means you have to go through those findings. And with all due respect, as a matter of law, you cannot make those findings because you don't know anything. A parcel map is not of a given right in the location where it is. You have to approve it. You're not obligated to approve it. You can only approve it if you can make those findings. I thought that it was very important in the prior application that was being made for the restaurant, Mr. Close made what I thought was a very valid point, and that is you can't just look at what the zoning is. We have to look at the way it is being used right now. And that comment was meant to justify, you've got a bunch of residential properties around what they were proposing to be done. That's what you have here. You don't look at what happened in the 1970s. We're in the year 2013. And in the year 2013, you don't just have 460 homes to the west. You also have residential to the north. You have residential to the east. You have residential to the south. This is a narrow strip of property surrounded by residential property. And that's what you have to look at when you're determining whether this parcel map meets the conditions and whether you can make those findings. And you cannot make any of the findings because you have no facts upon which to rely. I would urge you to deny the parcel map. It is not a parcel map application. It is a special use permit application and those require findings. It is ridiculous to say that there is nothing that you can consider with respect to the prior use or make them identify what it is they're going to use for the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Arnison? You don't want to talk, but you are in opposition? Oh, I missed Denise Edwards.
I think you, but I think everything that I was going to say has already been said.
So you don't wish to talk?
I don't wish.
But you're in opposition?
Yeah, my heart's right with him all the way.
All right, thank you. John Knott? And then followed by Mike Quanta?
My name is John Les
My name is John Leslie Knott II. I was born and raised here in Reno, Nevada, and thankful to be here today. It's my first time. I live in, on Achilles Drive. I'm a wounded warrior and a returning veteran. And I am, oftentimes I walk. I'm on foot a lot. And, uh, foot traffic in the area is, and safety first, people always mindset, is a strong, um, moral and, and, uh, it's a sense of, uh, our community coming together to look at this piece of land and find solutions. When I walk up there, I notice a few positives and a few negatives. Positive, we have great location. We have great access and, and it's a south-facing hillside, full sun exposure. Full sunlight exposure on a south-facing hillside. That's pretty impressive. We can use, utilize that perhaps for solar, for wind, now maybe not geothermal, but there's potential there in renewable energy. Nevada Energy's in the vicinity, has our power lines and transformers, as we know. In addition, there's, some of the land could greatly be improved with, uh, perhaps a community garden. I'd be happy to build raised box gardens out of railroad ties, recycle them, and, and we could just get some topsoil and, you know, get her done. Whoa?
John, can you focus on this particular-
Yes, sir. So, solutions-
On our agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for, on track. Again, I, I agree with the, uh, the opposition to the program. I've drawn a few maps and I see that we can, we're, we're in the right, we're heading in the right direction. We're all heading in the right direction. And, uh, I'd like to see something built great up there, but in the meantime, we don't need to rush. Let's measure thrice, cut once. Whoa?
All right, thank you. And Mike? He left?
No, King Town is the last name.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I, I'll probably butcher more. And after John, Christine Lemire?
Okay, Mike Quintana, for the record. I was, thought this was a done deal. I was on my way to play tennis and just found out this thing's still going. So, apologize for the way I'm dressed. But anyway, I oppose this parcel split too. I think about what's happening in the community, what's happening in the neighborhood, and I think that in the neighborhood, what we, what we think about this, this is a neighborhood. This is where people live. This is their livelihood. This is where they, they love the neighborhood. I don't think any business should be down there in that area because of all the houses that are around in that area. So, the guy that was talking earlier, that said about step one, step 20, I don't want to come back in three months, six months, even a year, still fighting this of not having this land used as a business. I don't know Reno's trying to get businesses in the area. We're really economically depressed, but this isn't the way to do it, I don't think, especially when it's affecting a whole neighborhood of people that are opposing this. And there's probably a lot of people that would want to be here that can't be here at the neighborhood. They just want it to be a simple neighborhood and not have any business there at all. And we don't want this to go to step 20. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Christine J.S. McHelmey? McElhany?
Hi, my name is Christine Lemire and I live on Socrates Drive. And I've lived up there for over 20 years. And yes, this has been zoned industrial for many years. My husband grew up on that hill. He's 66 now, and he remembers some industrial in there. But since I've lived up on the hill for 20 years, this land has been pretty much dormant. If it was a checking account, it would have been esceded to the state by now. Luckily, they've paid their taxes, otherwise the city or the county or somebody would have owned it. So I don't want the misunderstanding that it has been used commercial in all this time and the, um, residents lived up around us. They also claimed that this property up here at the north is industrial. That does not connect to Socrates or our homes. So that's on the other side of the hill and it's pretty much irrelevant of what it is. And you've all been up there, you know, the street is a narrow one-way alley, and I agree with what they're saying. To me, they're almost slapping you guys in the face by trying to circumvent the laws, by trying to subdivide this and get around the laws. And it's a narrow alley, and I don't know what business would go in between two substations and a tomahawk thing. I really think like a pet cemetery would go in there. We tried to call Nevada Energy to see if we could get a solar farm in there, and there's too many regulations and that's not possible. But what he's trying to do is a slap to all of us, I think, and I thank you for listening with us tonight.
Thank you. All right, McElhany? And followed by Thomas Bell?
For the record, J.S. McElhany. So many people have made so many good points that I'm not gonna waste a lot of your time. I just think that C4 is trying to thread the legal needle here and, uh, get around the, the S U P and, uh, end up doing what they intended to do all along. Thank you.
Thank you. So Charles Johnson, please, and followed by Ron Lorenzen?
You said, you said my name before, Tom Bell?
Oh. Did I skip you?
Yeah.
Thomas Bell?
My name is Thomas Bell. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And, um, I appreciate your patience, uh, in, yes, in, um, listening to, uh, my neighbors. Uh, they have serious concerns. And, um, I believe that you do need to talk about uses. Uh, C4 Equity says that uses are not relevant to this discussion. However, this subdivision opens up Pandora's Box to a myriad of uses without further public review, as has been made clear by Vern Cluse. So, this is the only chance we have to put our input in on these uses that you are enabling, that you would enable if you approved this special use permit. We hope that eventually C4 Equity will get tired of this whole process. Um, they're paying lawyers and planners and engineers a lot of money, and, uh, eventually we hope that we will prevail. They may sell the property. What if they sell the property and then who knows what uses the new owner will, will do? What uses will the new owner, um, be able to do without, without public review? Auto repair, building and landscape materials lumberyard, household goods, light assembly and repair, plant nursery, garden supply, bus or other transportation terminal, collection station, heavy machinery and equipment, rental, sales and service, indoor manufacturing, processing, assembly, fabrication, maintenance, repair or renovation business, rental store without door storage, truck rental, salvage or reclamation of products, warehouse distribution center, wholesale, products manufactured or assembled on-site. These are just some of the many uses that are listed as P, that they're able to do. They'll have to, of course, submit a business plan. The planning, uh, process will go forward, but we've seen from the last S U P what the city planners are, would allow these people to do, and we don't agree with them. We believe that many of these uses are not compatible with surrounding land use. We believe that many of these uses are not supported by, uh, available services and infrastructure. We believe that there will be severe traffic impacts and, um, problems with the pedestrian environment because of many of these uses. You are enabling these if you allow this special use permit. Why is Union Pacific opposed to the project? Because they are worried about truck traffic. Many of these uses would cause an increase in truck traffic and some very large trucks. Uh, they're concerned about problems, um, with that crossing. There's only one egress and entrance to the property. We're worried about emergency services. Um, if the train stops on the tracks, there's only one way out, circuitous route through Comstock. If there's a derailment and gaslight is blocked, there is no emergency access. The infrastructure does not support any industrial use on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Johnson? He left? He's in opposition against any noise or dust or smell-producing operation or the gas line, in the gas line, lane area, homeowners outweigh individual rights. So, Ron Lorenzen? Did I butcher that? Okay. Uh, he's in opposition too. The proposals for this land is not conducive to the area. The access point for big rigs will be a hazard, very dangerous, not to mention increased traffic is going to create. The fact that it will decrease the land value of the community is just not right. And then Ed Hawkins?
For the record, Ed Hawkins, Ward Four, NAB Chair. Getting back to the parceling and the parcel map, Michael Ponye is correct in the legal rights of the owner to parcel this, uh, property out. However, so is the homeowner association's attorney. What we have here is we have an intent that won't be disclosed at this time. There's a request in front of you for an S U P for this parceling, and that's an obligation that you guys have to fulfill tonight. Yes, Michael's right, they have a legal right to parcel. Homeowners Association attorney is also saying that you have the obligation to make the findings because this is an S U P. We were here in February, myself and the McCords, I was here talking to you and telling you what was proposed at that time did not fit the neighborhood. When we left that night, I talked with the McCords, told them it's time to appeal your decision. Tonight, you're going up against the same situation, but now we're parceling out land where parcel number one becomes a buffer zone for what's to take place later on. It's just not lines on the map, as the gentleman said. Those are decision lines that allow another use to be made on the other side of parcel number one, because that is your buffer. And I'll guarantee ya, there's several here that were here last time when we went in front of the city council and got the 6-0 vote. They're willing to chuck out that 50 bucks for the appeal if it doesn't go their way. Their hearts into this. I, I'm into it. Ho-hawg, yes, you have to find the findings. You have to meet the findings on this parcel because it's an S U P. I think these people will appeal any wrong decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak that hasn't? Well, let me get everybody, you really had, you know, your three minutes, ma'am, and you should have really brought that before. So, just hold on for a minute. Okay. If you come up and speak, please state your name and then see Michelle afterwards so you can fill out a request to speak form.
My name is Carol Kelly, and I did already fill out the form and wasn't going to speak, but I'm gonna say this in front of you the way I said it at the city council meeting. Kevin Sullivan and I are renters at the very top of University Ridge, and we've been there three and a half years, and we were starting to negotiate with our landlord just about the time of the last meeting. We've postponed that, and quite honestly, if you draw the lines on this map and provide this applicant the ability to go to step 20, we're gonna move and buy somewhere else. That's how simple it is. We're just not gonna want to live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, come on up and state your name again, please.
Well, my name is Gloria Lanco, and, um, on your disclosures, um, I believe we turned in a petition with over 300 signatures, and also, uh, our attorney, no one acknowledged that our attorney had written a letter, and I would just like to know if each one of you saw the petition, if you read the attorney's lawyer, letter, and if you read the one from Union, the railroad. This is really important.
All those are in the packet and- That's where we get the packet, is to read it, to go over those. It's not something you can sit down and do in 15 minutes. Okay. Ma'am, you've already, you've already been up? Well, we've, we've, we're gonna close public comments. We, I think we've heard, you know, from a lot of people, and, so, if I don't have anybody new that wants to come up and talk, then I'll close public comments. Before I turn it over to the commissioners, I have a question for legal. And my question is, and part of this is for the audience, is that when we do, um, a parcel map, um, part of the reason that a project doesn't come before us is because that's the legality of the law. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes. For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney.
And so, um, in fact, wasn't that a Supreme Court ruling? If I'm not mistaken, that the project doesn't come at the same time?
Well, without knowing exactly what case that you're talking about, I would concur with the analysis that you see in the staff report that you heard discussed about what is inside, what you can consider. I would agree with Ms. Kern that, um, you have to make findings. Then the question, and I would agree with Mr. Ponye, that, I mean, certain findings, I mean, he went through the list of findings, and that's really your purview is to decide whether or not those findings have been met.
Okay, thank you. All right, turn it back to the commissioners for questions. Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be happy to start. My first question is for staff. Vern? For the record, would you give us a definition of the word "project" as it's stated in the findings? In this case, what are the, what is a project?
Vern Claude, Senior Planner. In this case, the project is the request for the parcel map.
Okay, so, the project is lines on a map. It is not structure, it is not road, it is not use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I will a- address as part of the packet that I received, and I did read all of the emails, all of, or perused, all of the petition, and a letter from Kern and Associates. I also received one from McDonnell Carano, and several other emails. Vern, if you would, come back up, please. The letter specifically that I'm going to refer to right now, Kern and Associates, page two, the bottom of, I'll call it paragraph two, says, "Therefore, the application should be denied based solely on the applicant's deliberation, deliberate refusal to disclose the proposed use of the parcels and the resulting failure to be able to make any findings required under RMC 18.06.405(c)." I have a copy of 18.06.405(c) before me that says, "Special use permits shall be initiated by application of the property owner." And that was provided by you staff. Is that what is being quoted here? I mean, that's what I have just read? That's what's being, was, was the applicant, did the applicant provide, uh, the application?
Yeah, the, Vern Claude, Senior Planner. The applicant did provide the application, yes, according to C.
Okay. I mean, I, I received it on a CD also, and, and, and I saw what I thought was a copy of original documents, but I just want to confirm that, that that is what I've received, and, and so therefore, it shouldn't be based upon that, that, a denial.
Not on that section.
Thank you. Okay, next question is for the applicant's representative.
Yes.
Um, we've got four parcels. Parcel number four is pointed out to us as being 301 feet away from the residential property lines. Is that correct? Is that the way it was set up?
Is that correct, Mr.? Yes.
Okay. So, in being 301 feet away, does that exclude parcel number four from all of the SUP requirements that are shown in Exhibit B if the applicant were to provide a, I'm just going to pick on the first one I see, "Commercial amusement and recreation," or an indoor gun range, which is on page three of Exhibit B? Would those then be excluded from an SUP in your opinion?
No.
Why?
An SUP would still be required because it is required by code for any industrial property regardless of proximity to residential area.
So what you're saying is that even though we're no longer, parcel number four would no longer be adjacent to residential property, and it's more than 300 feet away from residential property, that an SUP is still required?
What I'm saying is that the requirements of your code would apply to parcel four just as they would apply to any other industrial property regardless of location under your code in order to develop a gun range indoor, a commercial amusement recreation area, a special use permit is required.
Okay.
So for those uses on parcel four, if you approve this, yes, a special use permit would be required.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Vern? I have the same question for you, please. Now that parcel number four is being proposed to be in excess of 300 feet away from any residential adjacency, do you agree that an SUP is still required for this I zoning as Mr. Pagni just described?
Vern Claude, Senior Planner. If the use is listed on the use chart as requiring a special use permit?
Yes.
Doesn't matter if it's adjacent 300 feet away or 1,000 feet away, it would require a special use permit.
Okay, so any time a parcel exists in an I-zone area, whether it's 300 feet away or 1,000 feet away from residential, it still requires an SUP?
If the use in of itself in the zone requires a special use permit, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to withhold some other questions that I have until I let my other commissioners ask some questions, and now come back to me, please.
Okay, Commissioner Romeo? Romeo, sorry, Reno. Why do I say that?
I replaced Romeo.
It's happened over seven years.
Yeah, I replaced Romeo.
Yeah, I just miss him.
Oh, that's it. Vern, if you have a second, let's talk about kind of going along that same line as what Commissioner Wieske was talking about. So you're saying if the special use permit is required in industrial zoning area, it's going to be required no matter what? Can you give me, can you look at this list on parcel four? Can you tell me what would not require a special use permit? Like adult business, would that require a special use permit? Would animal shelter, animal clinic, I mean, what doesn't require?
Well, adult business has locational criteria which would most likely preclude it from the site.
Helipad, I think that's one of the, you know, does that actually, does that have to have a special use permit for that?
No, but it's subject to additional use regulations that are listed right on the right-hand column there.
Okay. So what are, so all the ones that say "none" on the backside here, that's a permitted right, they can do it regardless?
No, the ones that say "none" means there's no additional use regulations.
Okay.
But there are other code requirements that would be applicable to it, it's just certain uses have additional requirements in addition to what code would require if there is no other discretionary administrative review, like a site plan review or a special use permit.
Okay. Could you tell me a couple of these that would not require a special use permit?
Electric generating plant, post office, public transit or school bus shelter, which is basically a little shelter, school vocational or trade, I mean, bus or other transportation terminal, collection station, crematorium, food processing, wholesale bakery, heavy machinery and equipment rental, I think some of these were read by some of the folks in the audience, outdoor storage, printing and publishing, railroad, railroad yard or shop. So there are a number of uses that could potentially go in on...
Just by right.
Some of the parcels by right.
By right.
By right.
And it's my understanding that parcel four and parcel two are by right, is that correct?
Yes.
Parcel two could have this, just, just by right. I mean, it could have a crematorium, if I recall, only 56 feet away from my house. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, but they'd also would have to meet the stringent health department regulations related to that sort of, I mean, again, just because a use is allowed by right doesn't mean there aren't regulations that would address the impacts like air quality, water pollution, those sorts of things.
And if I could, just to clarify the record, there was actually just recently a state law passed regarding crematoriums, so in that case, no, because our code needs to be updated to respect that.
Well, let's say a bakery, you know?
Crematorium would not be allowed per state law.
Food processing, wholesale bakery, you know, there's, I guess what I'm saying is these uses could become a nuisance in the neighborhood even if they are, you know, but by right, because this is industrial zone, they could be put right there really close to, to homes. And I guess before us is really just a parcel map. I mean, it's just a parcel map application, but it creates more than half of the parcel then gets taken off the table, and by right, they can do a lot of, a lot of things to this, to this, to this property that otherwise would have our review. So I guess that's some of my concerns there. Also, since you're up there, let's talk about the parcel map itself. So it's my understanding, according to Table 18.12-4, industrial zoning districts, the minimum lot width is 150 feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so as defined, I looked up the definition of width because everything's defined in the code, but width is, lot width is measured as a distance between the side lot lines measured at right angle to the lot depth at a point midpoint, midway between the front and rear lines. So the way it sounds like, and I'd have to make the assumption that on parcel one, the width is then north to south? Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct, because that's where the access easement comes in from the east, which makes that the front, so therefore the west side is the rear.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was a question. Is there any lot to width ratios in the code?
Not in the industrial zone, it's basically the, what you quoted before, it's the minimum lot width and the minimum lot size.
Okay, because I know in other areas, it's lot to width ratios, because it appears that they're creating this lot to create the buffer so they, they can move some of these lots off the table. And so I think that is within our purview as commissioners to have a say on this because it won't come before us again. So with that, that said, I also had, I have a couple more questions, but I'll, I'll let some others speak. Thanks.
This is kind of technical, and it's not for Vern, so he can sit down if he wants to. I guess this would be for legal. I'm just having a really hard time figuring out what you said originally. I'm looking at these findings, and you know, on other projects, sometimes we can't make the finding, several findings, because they're just not applicable. So say you make like, you know, five of the allotted findings, and that's okay. But what I'm seeing here is it's like, we can go two different ways. We can either not make any of the findings because we have no information as to the use, or we can make all of the findings because there's no use. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So I guess, can I have some clarification?
I mean, I think this, I mean, the case is going to turn on at the end of the day. For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, is permitted uses that, that'll come into play in the event that you make a decision that you can meet the findings. The question is, can you use those in your consideration of whether or not to make the findings? The code is already determined and that, that those uses are permitted. So, I mean, that's, that's, and that's where, you know, Mr. Pagni and Ms. Kern may differ on whether or not that becomes your purview. The recommendation from legal would be make the best record that you can make. So pick, pick it and go with it. So go down, go down the findings list one at a time, what is in front of you, what is the application for, and then try to fit it into that box or not fit it into that box based upon how you believe the code reads.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I'll leave us.
Just absorbing all this right now, let me...
Okay. Commissioner Kaufman, I have a question for Vern. These different parcels, so say they want to develop parcel E, or three. They can't combine parcels, is that correct? In other words, they couldn't combine one operation on two parcels?
That would be separate, you know, they couldn't build a building across the property line, they could put a separate use on one parcel and another use that goes along with it on, on another parcel, as long as they met the requirements of establishing that use, SUP, code standards, you know, whatever they would have to do to establish it, but they could put, I mean, they have four parcels, so they could establish whatever uses would fit on those parcels based on what the code requires.
Does each one of those parcels have setbacks regulation?
Yes.
So, I guess that's why I'm, kind of the question...
So anything they put on would have to meet the setbacks for the parcel based on where the front yard is, where the rear yard is, it modifies based on where the access hits the parcel.
And do easements go with those parcel?
Yes, they have to establish easements to provide access to the parcels, that's part of the parcel map process. You can't create a parcel that has no access.
Okay.
So they would have to provide the easement and then also improve the access to whatever standard is necessary to serve what uses on that parcel.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wieske.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vern, to touch on that, do we know right now what is considered front, side, and rear yards for all four parcels, and if so, would you point them out, starting with parcel one?
Parcel one, based on the access coming in from this area here, this would be the front, this would be the rear, and these would be the sides. With the access coming into two, this would be the front, rear, sides. I mean, basically they had, on all of these, it looks like that the front is the east side, the sides are north and south, and the rear is the west.
Okay. Now, do we have setback requirements from these access roads?
Yes, you would have to, I mean, basically it's a front yard setback from an access road.
Okay.
But the front yard setback's about 10 feet, and it's 10 feet in the industrial zone.
Okay. Parcel number two, I'm looking at the existing building, and the east side of it looks fairly close to the property line. Is there, do you, have you been given any information that shows parcel number two is, has adequate setback for front yard and for landscaping buffer?
I would have to look at the larger scale map. I didn't, I mean, it looks, this is a 1 to 40 scale, but it's been reduced, so I believe that it meets the setback, but I would have, I'd have to double check that.
Okay. All right.
But that would have to, if the map gets approved, they would have to show that before they created the parcel, that it meets, meets the setbacks. So that would...
Jockeying some...
Potentially involve a little minor modification to the lines as drawn, but it probably could work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Reno?
C4 Equity owns a lot that's adjacent to the west, adjacent to parcel one, correct? As the parcel map stands, could they add that lot into parcel one? Could they adjust the property lines there and include it into parcel one?
One zone PED, one zone industrial, I, I haven't analyzed that, we'd have to, it's, I guess theoretically possible, but I don't know that it is practically possible, but again, I, I haven't really analyzed that.
And the reason I ask is it could be an access point to parcel one, and that's, that's a concern, so, but, but before us, it's just a parcel map, and I understand that.
And it's also about a 30, 40-foot grade difference there, too.
Yeah, it does go down. Well, actually, I'll ask another question. So, so we have one parcel now, it generates so much traffic. Making four parcels theoretically should generate more traffic, I would think. Can you speak to that at all? I know that's a hard one to, because we don't know uses exactly, but right now parcel two does generate truck traffic for indoor truck repair, correct?
At this point, there is no business license for that type of operation on the site. At this point, there is, there's no active business license for them to do anything on the property.
Okay, but when you parcel things, it usually generates more traffic. Can I say that? I don't know, that's a...
It, it depends on what the ultimate use is, so it's hard for us to estimate that. I don't know if Bill wants to weigh in on this, but...
For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer. Just parceling it won't, you know, as Vern said, it really depends on the uses that are coming to request for that, that area. They could potentially, without parceling it, you have a seven-acre parcel, you could build something considerably larger, you don't have your setback issues, you don't have your building over property line issues, then they now would then have four, four much smaller parcels, that development that could be created on that single, any one of those single parcels would be smaller than the development that could be created for the, for the whole. So it really depends at the time when a development comes in, we will have them do their reports and analyze it then.
Thanks, yeah, it was probably a flawed question, I apologize. Thanks.
Further expanding on that, Claudia Hansen, Plating Engineering Manager. If they were doing more of a subdivision map and parceling in, say, office condominiums and creating, I don't know, 40 or 50 lots on there, I think then we could probably make the link. So in that case, it would still just be drawing lines, but drawing more lines, I think we could make that link that, yes, it's going to intensify the use if you're breaking it into a number of, a large number of smaller parcels. it into a number of, a large number of smaller parcels. I think the four parcels, you can't really make that...
Of course, Claudia's right. When we had the tentative map earlier tonight, and we added 400, you know, residential units to that area, of course, that generates a traffic demand over the property before we put those lines on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Wieske.
Thank you. Vern, I've got another question for you, please. Right now, this single lot, as it stands, can house all of the permitted uses without coming before the Planning Commission or City Council, as long as it meets whatever additional regulations, if it has, on it. And more than one of those permitted businesses, should the property owner decide to build multiple buildings on it, multiple uses could be operating in business on that single lot, correct? In other words...
Basically, right now, it's Vern Kloss, Senior Planner. Basically, it's the entire parcels adjacent to residentially zoned property, so any use on that list would require a special use permit.
Even an animal clinic and shelter, which is a permitted use and has no additional regulations?
Yes.
Requires a special use permit?
Because it's a non-residential use adjacent to residentially zoned property.
Okay. So the minute this breaks up, and that's what I was asking earlier, anything that's permitted could go in, but if it still requires an SUP, then it requires an SUP, is that correct?
Correct.
So now what it's doing by parcelizing this into four parcels is allowing all of the permitted uses without an SUP? If it's away...
If it's over 300 feet away or less than an acre in size and not adjacent to.
Okay, thank you. Angela. So when we look at this, right now, and I'm going to ask you the same questions, permitted uses on the single parcel, because its residential adjacency requires an SUP, even if it's a permitted use with no additional use regulations, correct?
So parcel, as it stands today...
As it stands today, a single parcel.
As it stands today, any development, including a parcel map, requires a special use permit because of residential adjacency requirements.
Okay, so if this were to be approved, this parcel map, which is the application before us, this special use permit was approved tonight, then only parcels one, two, and three, which are less than 300 feet, would require a special use permit. Parcel four would be exempt from all permitted uses.
Parcel one and three will still trigger a special use permit for everything because of residential adjacency. Parcel two and four, the uses that are permitted will be permitted. The uses that require a special use permit will need a special use permit.
Why is parcel two exempt?
Because it's less than an acre. If it's, if it's, it's kind of two ways to look at this. If it's over 300 feet, which is parcel four, it's exempt. If it's less than an acre and within 300 feet, it's exempt.
Okay, and that's...
And not directly adjacent.
And that is parcel number two?
Correct. For instance, parcel one is one acre, but because it's directly adjacent, it still triggers a special use permit.
Very good. I'm going to ask you the same question.
If I can jump, I think parcel three's a site plan review. It's not adjacent. Do you want to... If I'm, you said special use permit, I think it's a site plan review on parcel three, just to make sure the record's clear.
Michael Pining for the record, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. I'm going to ask you the question I asked Vern earlier, because you've got, hopefully, a dimension on your scalable drawings. Parcel number two, the existing building, on the east side, it looks very close to the proposed parcel line.
Right.
Where the access road comes in, that becomes the front of the property.
Right here.
Correct, right there. Is there the appropriate setbacks, including landscape buffering between the property line and the building?
Parcel two, this area here is concrete, so it's not actually building. And the setback is based on the building, the property line to the building. So that was designed to meet the setback requirements.
Okay, very good, thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Vern, I have a question for you. I want you to help me make a finding. Finding A. So the proposed use is compatible with existing surrounding land uses and development. If we change this, and we don't have to use an SUP for parcel four for some of those projects, isn't that changing and not compatible?
Well, at this point, the proposed use is the parcel map. It does change the regulations applicable to certain uses on certain parcels, depending on, as we discussed throughout the site plan review, special use permit, additional use regulations. Parcel number four, in order to develop it, will require variance, because they can't put their front yard landscaping in the front yard, because there's an easement there that they can't build in. So anything that gets built on parcel four would still require variance. But to get back to your question is, by creating the parcels, it does modify how uses are reviewed, depending on which parcel it is and what the use is. But we don't know what those uses are at this point.
Okay.
Commissioner Locke, Vern, I have a question. You mentioned site plan review. What was that for? What were you talking about?
Site plan review is an administrative review of a use...
Was that parcel two?
Parcel three?
Two.
No, parcel three would require a site plan review.
Not...
Parcel three, site plan review. It's within 300 feet, not adjacent to. Parcel two is an acre or less, so it does not trigger the site plan review.
Okay.
Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Reno.
So you were saying on parcel four, a variance will be required just because of the front yard setback, correct?
That's correct.
So no matter what, it's going to get a variance? It'll come back for us for variance?
When they come in to put a use on that site, they would have to request a variance, because they would have to landscape the front yard, and because there's a non-buildable easement along the west or the east 20 feet of it, they can't put anything in there. So they would have to request a variance to modify that standard, or to allow them to push the landscaping to the west.
With that in mind, the roads we're seeing on this parcel map are not being considered. It's just the parcel lines, correct?
Well, they had to show how they're going to access the parcel, and if you have been out there on the, I mean, basically, the only way to get to parcel, this parcel, is to come off of, from the east.
If they were in parcel four to get an easement from the south to enter, then would it still require a variance? I guess that's what I'm getting at. It depends, because these roads aren't part of the actual parcel map, right? It's part of the access that you're going to have to find when you go to develop it.
I guess theoretically, they could try to do that, yes.
Okay. So they could get around getting a variance on parcel four if they wanted to? Or if they, there is a possibility there?
There is a possibility.
Thanks.
And just to add, the easements are part of this review, because the easements are required for the parcel map.
So the easements, what we see up here are part of the review?
Yes.
Are they set in stone as part of the parcel map?
Well, they would have to be placed in substantially the same place, because the SUP, you have to, if it gets approved, you have to comply substantially with what you applied for. So if they wanted to modify the access, there might be another process they would have to go through. But at this point, I mean, we weren't considering that they would do that.
Well, when I say substantial, I mean, moving it from going to the east to going to the south, right at the bottom corner there, it's still substantially, it looks a lot like it, and that way, a variance wouldn't be required, correct? I mean, that could be found, that's substantial.
We're what-if-ing now.
Yeah, no, I know, I understand. Thanks. Chair, I have another question. Vern, you're up there. So let's talk about this site plan review for parcel three. So a special use permit would not be required on it, just a site plan review? And that's administratively, it would never come in front of a body? You guys would do it through your office?
Site plan review is an administrative review that's appealable to the hearings officer and to the city council. So if someone did not agree with the decision of the administrator, they can appeal it to the hearings officer, and if they don't agree with that decision, they can appeal it to the city council. So it's not like it's...
Okay, but site plan review, then there's notification, obviously, to adjacent property.
There's notification exactly the same way as a special use permit.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have any other questions? Discussion?
Commissioner Locke. I mean, the way the system is set up, it really is set up to protect residents from, I mean, we mitigate all this stuff, noise and traffic issues. I mean, it's, I think, you know, the cities were set up for what we would think would be success. But my problem, I guess, is parcel two. Parcel two is dangling right there. I mean, parcel two is the only one that's not really set up for any protection. And at this point, I mean, for me, I'm looking at finding E, and it's real hard to find. And this is the reason. It's the only finding that specifically talks about uses. So it's asking me to find a use. I mean, it's telling me, find this use. I can't say that it's not applicable, because it's right there. Finding E, okay, split it in half. The uses proposed contribute to and enhance the character of the area in which it is located. If I assume that all of these uses, all of these Ps here, if I assume that those can, are the potential uses, I'm not so sure that they contribute to and enhance the character of the area. That's kind of where I am right now, and I'm trying to, you know, edge my way around that.
Mr. Chairman, can I address that, please?
Is it the wrong...
Nope, you're okay.
Is that the right finding? Let's see.
Commissioner Locke, I believe finding A...
Is it finding A?
The proposed use is compatible with existing surrounding land uses and development, goes with E, okay?
Okay, because there's a use, yeah, use.
I cannot make findings A and E after the discussion and information that was just brought forward, that parcel number two, because it is under, be it by how many ever square feet it is, under an acre, is allowed every P use without...
It's a lot of Ps.
Excuse me just a minute, I'm the one that's talking right now, okay? And I would appreciate a few minutes, thank you. That there is no longer an SUP required for lot number two, and yet it's less than 300 feet from the residential area, and everything that is listed with a P in Exhibit B becomes appropriate for that property. And I think there are uses that are not appropriate for that property. That's why I cannot make finding A or E, and I will be voting for denial.
Commissioner Locke, I would agree with that, and I'm glad you pointed out A, because I missed that one.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Reno, I also can't make the finding A because of parcel two, but also because of parcel four, in so much as they are taking it out of this whole development of the development of a parcel map, they're taking it out of consideration for a special use permit, where now we have the purview to review it, because it is adjacent to residential. And so I cannot make it, I can't make finding A or E, for that matter. So I will be voting to deny this.
Commissioner Olivas, kind of going through this, I've got to agree, I'm having trouble with finding A and E, and as I look at it and think about it, there's a lot of thoughts that go into it. But I think that a lot of these findings, because there is no project before us, they're not applicable. But I think that A and E, they tend to, kind of the saying that they're merely lines on a map, I think, isn't accurate, because lines on a map, these lines change the rights and responsibilities that come along with the property. And so they're not merely lines on the map, they've changed the rights and responsibilities. So when I look at that, and I look at the surrounding uses, and even the surrounding industrial uses, there's a lot of residential adjacency. And for that to take those, some of the lots, parcels two and four, out of the review process that comes along with residential adjacency, and the other special use permit review, I have trouble making those findings.
Commissioner Kaufman, I too have a problem with A. And when I look at A, by approving this, it does change the surrounding land uses, and that's why I couldn't make the findings for that, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add on to your comments and the comments of the other Commissioners, when everything required a special use permit, I don't know, 45 minutes to an hour ago, I could have made these findings. But now that we've gotten down to the details and the information, there is no way I can make these findings, as I stated earlier. So if you're ready for a motion, unless somebody else would like to make it.
Go ahead, Mr. Wieske.
In the case of LDC 13-00059 Gaslight Lane Special Use Permit for Parcel Map, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to deny the special use permit, subject to conditions, A and E that I cannot make.
Commissioner Locke, I second that motion, and I too cannot make findings A or E.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Five to zero. Any action taken by the Planning Commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance, or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person, entity must make his or her its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the Planning Commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the Planning Commission recommendation. Okay. Five minutes, all right. Thanks, everybody, for showing up.
Thank you.
Did you read the appeal on that last one? Did you read the appeal on the last one? Okay.
Of course I did.
Just checking.
Open meeting on TXT 13-00015, clarification of off-street parking.
Good evening, once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Tonight before you, on this text amendment, is revisiting a standard that came up in an earlier case tonight. Our camera's a little off here. Can you zoom in, please, Michelle? Thank you. So back in the early 2000s, we had a contract planning firm come in and restructure our code. With that restructuring, a few items were inadvertently omitted from our code, one of them being the requirement to provide off-street parking on the same parcel as the subject site or the subject use. So you saw earlier tonight, in the red case, their parking was being provided two blocks to the south. That obviously doesn't work very well, but it was removed, as I said, from the code a few years back. And so this is just putting that requirement back in. We have also added that it's either on the subject parcel or an adjacent site, because so often, we have a parking variance to put it next door, which hasn't been an issue in the past. So we added that in, that you could either put it on the site or on the adjacent parcel, as long as there's a principal use on the parcel. So this is just adding that back in, and I'm available for questions.
That's the only item?
That's the only item.
I have a question.
That's why I sent Nathan home.
Chair, I have a question, really quick. Commissioner Reno, for the record, unless otherwise specified, what does that mean? Right at the beginning of the red, unless otherwise specified, I didn't quite understand.
Certain areas allow off-street parking to be provided elsewhere. So in the MU district, you can provide your required off-street parking within 1,000 feet of the parcel.
So like a parking garage?
Right, in a parking garage. So anywhere in the MU district, you can provide it within 1,000 feet. The idea being that we're trying to promote walkability, the more people we can get on the street, the more successful those areas are. So being within 1,000 feet downtown on South Virginia Street, it still meets the intent of code in those areas.
Okay, and then, so I assume, I mean, adjacent parcels on either side of a parcel, but also across the street, I assume that's a...
Adjacent is across the street.
Okay, yeah.
Adjointing would be touching.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions?
No, Commissioner Wieske did...
I'm just going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. In the case of TXT 13-00015, clarification of off-street parking, based upon the compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council approve the text amendment by ordinance.
I'll second that, Commissioner Wieske.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All against? Five to zero. Michelle? Truckee Meadows, regional planning liaison report.
Mr. Chairman, since I'm the only sitting member here tonight, we had a couple of workshops earlier this month to do our five-year review. Our final workshop is tomorrow night, Washoe County Chambers, along with our July meeting. I haven't heard if Commissioner Stapleton, but I'm sure we'll get one in about two seconds when I shut up, whether or not she got accepted or approved to move forward to regional. But our meeting is tomorrow night, so if you guys aren't meetinged out yet, tomorrow night would be a lot of fun for you to come enjoy another meeting.
All right, staff announcements.
Thank you. Following up on Commissioner Wieske's comment, Dagney Stapleton was appointed by city council to sit on regional planning commission. She has been notified of that. And as also stated, there is a meeting tomorrow night, which should be quite a lengthy, active, exciting meeting tomorrow night. It's quite an agenda. And I have a few other announcements. As you have probably noticed, that's not Marilyn sitting over there. Jonathan, Marilyn Craig actually retired from the city of Reno about, almost two weeks ago. And Jonathan Shipman is now our lead attorney for our team. And with that...
He got put right in the fire.
He did, he had a fun night. So with that, just reminder on questions tonight, we're great for the attorney. And just remember in the future, if it's a land use matter, a zoning matter, staff are the experts on the subject matter for that. So if it's a zoning, land use question, feel free to come to staff. If it's open meeting law, ethics, anything like that, feel free to go to the city attorney. You can always start with staff. And if we can't handle the question, we will punt to the city attorney's office. So just a little reminder on that.
Claudia, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Of course. So, for example, in the case of the red case tonight, who did the map? Wasn't that, who does that? Who makes that?
Which map?
The little, the sketch, and like saying where the landscaping is going of the building and all that stuff.
The applicant provides that.
Okay, so they give that. Staff never does anything like that?
The only thing we prepare is the zoning map.
Okay. Okay, I didn't feel like she had prepared that. Okay, got it, got it.
Okay. In the next topic, if we're moving on, yes, in the last case in Gaslight, we held a, as mentioned during the hearing, we held a Hot Topic meeting, and I didn't sing the song, so that's good. And with that, exhibit D in your packet for Gaslight, had a memo from Office of Communications and Community Engagement. And it summarized the Hot Topic meeting that we had and the comments that came out of that. As you know, we're moving away from NABs in the future. And so this will be one of our tools for public outreach. So we would appreciate if you looked through exhibit D of that case. It summarizes the meeting, and it also summarizes the comments and participation of the online outreach. So this is, we're kind of the test case on this one. So if you have any suggestions or comments on this, we would love the feedback. Format or other questions you might be looking for in that. This is taking the place of those comment cards.
Claudia?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieske. It would be very helpful if staff would review the process with us of what Hot Topic is before we just get it in a staff report.
Sure.
So that we know better how to use it, at least for me. Maybe you other commissioners figured it out right away, but some days, I can be a little slower than others. So if you don't mind, if you'd set time sometime this month to go over that with me, I would appreciate it.
Actually, I think I will invite Deanna, the director of that department. I'm not going to try and pronounce her last name because I always mess it up, but she's actually probably watching right now. And she would probably love to come and give you a quick presentation on Think Reno and then the outreach that they're doing. So I will invite them to come.
It's how we, how I need to look at it and use it as a tool that, I want specifics. And if she can give it, great, otherwise...
She will probably do it as a team.
From planning staff.
Sure.
You know, it's great to know how you guys want us to look at it and use it and what it means.
Okay, well, I think Deanna and I will maybe do that as a team, what their outreach is and how we would like you to use that. Okay, that's great, great feedback. But if you could look at that also, that exhibit D, and see if there's anything else that, in addition to, after you get your training on what that is. City council actions, Village at Lakewood was approved by city council, Panther Valley Industrial Master Plan was approved, zoning, first reading was approved, I was coming back for second reading in August. And an amendment to the sphere of influence was initiated by city council to roll back out of the areas that were not annexed during our tier-one annexation last year. So that's going to be some areas near Gold Ranch, Grandview Terrace, and down in the south, kind of near Arrow Creek. And all that, the regional planning commissioners will see that at their level, but other than that, you won't see that boundary change through here. And then also, with the legislative session coming to a close, we have a number of bills that Jonathan and I are working on to make some changes that you'll be seeing coming through as text amendments. Some you won't be seeing as a text amendment, but we, once we get through all the changes we need to do, we'll come and give a presentation on the changes through that session that are affecting the city of Reno. And we'll bring that forward to you in a presentation. And that's all I have.
Does that mean when we get our, Commissioner Wieske, we will get our planning books updated?
The NRS ones?
Yeah.
They will be updated, it's usually about a year later. It's, don't hold your breath.
Oh, okay.
It's a while before we get those.
All right, thank you.
Okay, commissioners' recommendations for, suggestions for future agenda items, like what Mr. Wieske suggested.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske. Just, you know, a tutorial from staff on how to use Hot Topics, thank you.
Okay.
You know, just a second, Mr. Chairman. This is for Jonathan Shipman. It would be nice to know from legal if we're allowed to participate in those, or sit in and listen on those Hot Topics. In the past, we have, it's been recommended, we don't sit in on before. And if you could give us your recommendation at the time of, when it's agendized, it'd be great, thank you.
Will do, thanks.
Okay, public comments. I don't see anybody in the audience, so I will close public comments.
So moved.
Adjournment, a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Did you make that motion? It sounded like, I couldn't...
No, I didn't make a motion, I just said so moved. I will second your motion for adjournment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's closed. Good job, everybody. Hey.